Good evening, everyone. Welcome one, welcome all to this special session. In accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21 and by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council on Thursday, May 4, 2023 at 6:30, City Council Chamber, Building 1, Second Floor, 2401 Court, House Drive. The purpose of this special formal session is to conduct a public hearing by a representative of Avengrid Renewables LLC, whose project includes requesting approval for a de devizement for up to six power cables to make landfall under the beach and extend to the municipal parking lot at GPIN, at GPIN 2434-10-6904 located in the Sandbridge Seaside Market. At the conclusion of the public briefing, the City Council will take public comment. Avengrid representatives will have displays in the project available in advance of the meeting, starting at 5:30 in City Hall, and residents are encouraged to come early to view the materials and meet directly with the project representatives. If you wish to make comments during the meeting and participate virtually, please follow, register at WebEx at the number provided, and then also on the city website, and then register in the city clerk's office by calling 757-385-4303 prior to 5:00 PM on Thursday, May 4, 2023. The special session will be broadcast on cable TV, www.vbgov.com, and Facebook Live. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to the City Council prior to the special formal session via email at citycouncil@vbgov.com. Sincerely, Bobby Dyer. And we're going to get going first, and we have a roll call?
All present, sir.
Okay, great. And then, you know, we will proceed first with an Avengrid public briefing session by Steve Romine, legal representation of Avengrid Renewables, Williams Mullins, and Megan Higgins, Senior Director of New Project Development at Avengrid. And then we'll have some council questions, and we'll have some public comment, and then Avengrid will have the opportunity for rebuttal. But I just want to thank everybody that came here to participate. You know, be assured that this council wants the public input, and we're grateful that you're taking the time and effort to be with us tonight. So at first, if we can go ahead with the briefing by the Avengrid people. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of City Council. My name is Steve Romine, local attorney representing Kitty Hawk Wind, a private American company owned by Avengrid Renewables. The Avengrid team that's here tonight is Eric Thuma, Vice President, Offshore New Business; Megan Higgins, Senior Director, New Project Development; Chris Morris, Director of Engineering; Amanda Mayhew, Permitting Manager; Ashley McLeod, Lead Offshore Wind Public Affairs; Lauren Quickle, Engineering Manager; and Andrew Lentz, our EMF Engineer. It's my privilege tonight to introduce our presentation. I'll give you a quick roadmap. We're going to discuss who the developer is, Kitty Hawk Wind and Avengrid, including their experience. We're going to give a detailed project overview. We're going to address why Sandbridge is a designated landfall. We're going to discuss the before and after of the landfall construction, respond to various concerns raised by the residents, and outline the significant economic benefits to Virginia Beach and the Hampton Roads region, and briefly review the community engagement efforts to date. Tonight, you will hear many words from subject matter experts in the offshore wind industry. Words have meaning. I strongly encourage you to listen to the words to evaluate whether they are credible and substantiated by the facts in order to determine if they're true. As representatives of the City of Virginia Beach, your collective decision regarding the Kitty Hawk Wind project should be based on what is credible and true. This project will be transformative for Virginia Beach, Hampton Roads, and the Commonwealth. The benefits will be generational. It will provide jobs and economic benefit to our children and grandchildren. We also appreciate the 10 minutes you've reserved for us at the end to respond to questions that are raised. Now, I am pleased to introduce you to Megan Higgins, the Senior Director, New Project Development for Avengrid. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Megan Higgins, and I serve as the Project Director of the Kitty Hawk Wind Project. On behalf of Avengrid Renewables, thank you to Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and the members of City Council for scheduling today's special hearing on the Kitty Hawk Project. As Steve indicated, here are the agenda items that I would like to cover this evening. Moreover, our goals for today's presentation are to familiarize participants with Avengrid Renewables as a renewable energy developer, describe the development activities that have been accomplished by Avengrid since the acquisition of our federal lease in 2017, and most importantly, clarify misconceptions about the onshore and offshore components of this particular offshore wind project. As you can see from the graphic here, the project is located in federal waters, and for those of you who aren't as familiar with the project, I would encourage you to visit the project website, which is kittyhawkoffshore.com, to access the self-guided virtual open house. Kitty Hawk is wholly owned by Avengrid, whose parent company is Iberdrola, headquartered in Spain. Avengrid, as Steve mentioned, is an American company which is traded on the New York Stock Exchange. Iberdrola is a global energy company with assets in excess of $155 billion. As you can see from this graphic, it has many renewable energy projects and is the world's biggest electricity utilities supplying energy to almost 100 million people in dozens of countries. This graphic also represents Iberdrola's global offshore wind pipeline with 1.3 gigawatts in operation and another 5.5 gigawatts currently under construction. Iberdrola itself has invested more than $143 billion over the past two decades in renewable energy projects in the effort to combat climate change. As this graphic indicates, Iberdrola brings a multinational team of experts collaborating across multiple jurisdictions to our U.S. projects, and the U.S. projects benefit from the global expertise for our U.S. projects, which can be seen here off of New England as well as off of Virginia. Avengrid is an energy services company with $41 billion in assets. It has continuously been included on Forbes list of one of the world's most ethical companies by the Ethisphere Institute. The company's two primary lines of business include the networks, which is a combination of resources and expertise of eight electric and natural gas utilities serving over 3.3 million residents throughout New England and New York. The second line of business is Avengrid Renewables, which I am a part of, as well as the Kitty Hawk team members, which owns and operates over eight gigawatts of renewable energy projects onshore, consisting of onshore wind and solar projects, and it has one of the largest renewable asset bases of any company worldwide. You may be familiar with our Desert Wind Project or the Amazon Wind Project as you're driving down Highway 17 near Elizabeth City. That was the first commercial-scale onshore wind project in the United States. Avengrid successfully negotiated with the Department of Defense and obtained the necessary permits to make that project operational in 2016. Offshore, Avengrid is also a joint partner and is currently developing the first commercial-scale offshore wind project known as Vineyard Wind 1. That project is currently under construction. The foundations are actually going in place at the end of this month, which is very exciting, and that will go online at the end of 2024. So the Kitty Hawk Wind Project, what is it? Why are we here this evening? It is a utility project that will be constructed locally that is beneficial to the city at large as well as the region. I want to be absolutely clear to say that construction will not begin any sooner than 2026. We are currently in our permitting and development phase. We have not yet applied for our state permits. We have submitted our major federal permit, and the purpose is to get input from you all on our proposed landings. So similar projects that have benefited the city at large, you can see here on the graphic that you are familiar with, and like any other utility project, we are seeking approval from the city for site control in the form of a deed of easement so that we can land our cable in the Sandbridge Municipal Parking Lot. The Kitty Hawk Wind Project goals are to bring clean, reliable energy to Virginia. Kitty Hawk will be a significant catalyst to the development of the offshore wind industry in the Commonwealth, and with substantial and direct economic benefits to the city of Virginia Beach. Concurrently, the project will contribute to both federal and state renewable energy goals by helping to meet the administration's goal of delivering 30 gigawatts of offshore wind by 2030, and at the state level, contributing to the Virginia Clean Economy Act, which mandates the procurement of 5.2 gigawatts of offshore wind by 2034. And finally, the project will contribute towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 1.5 million tons per year. That's equivalent to taking half a million cars off the road. Beginning in 2013, the federal lease area was delineated over a four-year intergovernmental stakeholder process, which included federal, local, and state agencies, which resulted in a location in federal waters 34 miles from Virginia Beach and was named Kitty Hawk by the federal government. The entire lease area that you can see there depicted in the black outline has a capacity of 3.5 gigawatts, which is enough to power over 1 million homes within the PJM system, the Regional Transmission Operator. In our construction and operations plan for Kitty Hawk, our team proposed to develop approximately 180 wind turbine generators and up to three offshore substations for the entire lease area. Those will be used to collect and export the power generated from the turbines through submarine cables, which is the topic of discussion this evening. The major federal permit that has been submitted includes engineering and design for a landfall and interconnection in Virginia due to the state's robust electric system. As I mentioned previously, Avengrid Renewables executed this offshore lease through a competitive auction in 2017, and before building the project, we undertook extensive environmental, technical, and feasibility surveys to determine the best location to build not only the wind turbine generators, but where to place the cables while keeping environmental disturbance to a minimum. Our experienced U.S. team, supported by our global excellence, has advanced the project and is working on interconnection positions, the landing, extensive environmental surveys offshore which are continuing, and other federal permit applications. In total, the permitting process, which again I mentioned we're in that process right now, will require 27 approvals by local, state, and federal regulatory authorities. To familiarize everyone with how electricity is transported offshore to onshore, please refer to this schematic. And for the purposes of tonight's discussion, I'd like to draw your attention to the components labeled 2, 3, and 4. The transition from the offshore export cables to onshore cables will occur within an underground transition joint bay, that's labeled as number 3, located directly adjacent to the horizontal directional drilling, which is a method by which the cables will be pulled from offshore to onshore. After the transition joint bay, which will be located within the municipal parking lot to the south of the market, the cables will be split into phases and enter the underground duct banks along the corridor. This will be an array of conduits encased in concrete and buried underground and ultimately go to the onshore substation at Corporate Landing. So why Sandbridge? That question has come up repeatedly, and I hope that today's informal session out there, as well as questions generated this evening, will help to clarify and answer that question. So our team of experts had evaluated technical, environmental, and regulatory constraints, as well as received input from the city, and Sandbridge is the optimal cable landing location. Sandbridge was chosen due to the existing disturbed area, the parking lot, the fact that it's the most feasible to construct, it has the available acreage along the Virginia coast, which is very sparse, location to a nearby PJM point of interconnection, the substation, to connect to with available capacity, and we have three Q rights within the PJM system, and we found that it's the least impactful to the environment due to the fact that the work will be conducted underground and outside of the roadways. Where the submarine cables are proposed to land is shown on the figure on the right at Sandbridge, as we all know. The landfall area is an established municipal parking lot where the cables, again, will be horizontally directionally drilled to allow interconnection of export submarine cables to connect with the onshore cables. The proposed onshore transmission route is along existing previously disturbed rights-of-way owned entirely by one landowner, the city of Virginia Beach. With limited property available and DoD constraints that will have limitations for the cable traversing north, Sandbridge is the logical location based on these constraints as well as input from stakeholders and the city. I want to highlight one issue that I believe has come up repeatedly as well. The offshore export cable corridor will not impact designated sand-borrow resource areas for the purposes of beach renourishment. If you look on this figure, the sand resource areas are depicted in yellow, and you can see there's a split in those two geometric figures, and that is the DoD no-go zone. So we are unable to go any further north, and so our cable is depicted in the purple going to Sandbridge. So we are outside of the sand-borrow resource area polygons there. Our team has been in contact with the Army Corps and BOM for the past two years to discuss our proposed cable burial risk assessment in order to avoid such sensitive areas. These agencies have responsibility for not only permitting offshore wind projects, but also for the dredging of the sand-borrow areas, and the agencies regulate both in an environmentally sensitive manner. What we have learned from our offshore marine survey data is that there are other potential sand-borrow areas to be utilized after the Sandbridge source is expected to be depleted in the next 50 years. Little Island, as you can see is depicted in blue on the graphic, was also considered and eliminated based on input from the city and the Sandbridge community. Our team of experts has listened to members of the community regarding concerns about traffic and access to the parking lot. We have heard those concerns loud and clear. To minimize disruption, our team of engineers, working with the city utilities, traffic, and environmental departments, are evaluating the possibility of installing all six submarine cables, which would be a full lease buildout, during one off-season period, and that off-season period would be from October to May. And you can see the six cables that are depicted in different colors on the graph there. As I mentioned, we are working with the city in the city-owned parking lot to minimize disruption. Additionally, we will work with businesses to ensure that they can remain open so that services will not be disrupted, and access to the beach will not be completely limited. Each of the offshore export cables will be jointed to three onshore export cables and one fiber optic cable within the transition joint bay. This is an underground concrete box within the municipal parking lot where the cables from under the beach join a cable leading to the onshore substation. The transition joint bays at the cable landfall will have an excavation depth of up to nine feet. They will be flush-mounted, and there will be manhole covers over these so that there will be no above-ground infrastructure. Land surrounding the onshore export cables will be restored to pre-construction conditions. Parking within the lot will be allowed over the top of the underground structures, as the structures will be designed to support whatever load is required within the parking lot. To be clear, the installation of the cables at the parking lot will not negatively impact the beach or dunes. Up to six submarine cables would be installed by underground horizontal directional drilling to avoid impacts to the beach and the dunes and any other sensitive areas. The HDD burial depth will be 85 feet below ground, and this is a change, as we've previously communicated, due to further engineering studies, which modify the original HDD depth at 40 feet. And again, no above-ground structures will be located in the Sandbridge parking lot. The sea-to-shore connection is done via horizontal directional drilling, as I just mentioned, which is the standard practice for submarine cable installation techniques. This methodology, as you can see it's below ground, will be used to avoid disturbance to the beach and the dunes. No erosion will occur as a result of the HDD installation and will not disrupt any of the beach renourishment projects that are planned in the future. Here is an example of the landfall for the project that I mentioned, the Vineyard Wind 1 project. It's currently under construction with the foundations. However, the cable landing location has been completed, and this is located in the densely populated town of Barnstable in Cape Cod, Massachusetts. As the after-construction photo shows, the transition from the onshore export cables to offshore export cables will occur within the underground transition joint bay located in this parking lot, and the manhole covers are above each of the transition joint bays and are flush with the ground. Environmental impacts were extensively studied for the Vineyard Wind project by local, state, and federal agencies, requiring over 30 permits to allow work to commence. As a community benefit, the Vineyard Wind team coordinated closely with the town of Barnstable's Department of Public Works so that they could install in-road sewers concurrently with the transmission lines. Here are further examples and locations where the duct banks and splice faults will be located along the transmission route. The length of the onshore cable route is 5.8 miles. That's including 1.5 miles of Sandbridge Road. The onshore cables would connect from the submarine cable to three single-circuit cables, making one full circuit and a total buildout that may consist of up to six circuits. Two of the six circuits will share one duct banked, and the remaining four circuits will share another duct bank. We have listened to the Sandbridge residents about building all six cables in the parking lot, and additionally, we would install both duct banks outside of the roadway for Sandbridge in order to reduce construction activities and traffic impacts in one off-season, again, from October to May. The duct banks would be parallel to the newly constructed Sandbridge Road Improvement Project, or 7A, and would, again, be outside of Sandbridge Road. There would be limited lane closures that would be required, and the duct banks would be placed at a minimum of three feet underground and likely deeper in other locations so as to coexist with the city's utilities. Energy from the project will be delivered to the electric grid by a new onshore substation and switching station to be constructed at the Corporate Landing Business Park. Our team conducted a due diligence assessment to winnow down not only the landing locations, as was previously seen in the slide, but also the onshore transmission routes. Our team of subject matter experts, in consultation with city engineers and the Department of Defense, vetted options and chose the most direct and shortest route to the optimal point of interconnection at Corporate Landing, and that's reflected in red on the map. The preferred onshore route was chosen based on the evaluation of technical, environmental, and regulatory constraints, as well as input from the city. Avoiding impacts to the refuge and location within the city's right-of-way were paramount considerations. Routes north were evaluated and eliminated due to DoD security issues, or the no-go As I mentioned, one of the goals this evening is to provide clarity on what we believe is misinformation being disseminated. First and foremost, I would like to clarify health and safety issues with regard to the project, and that has to do with EMF, or electric magnetic fields. Electric and magnetic fields are invisible lines of force present wherever electricity is generated, transmitted, or used. We encounter EMF all the time in daily life. All power lines, cables, household wiring, and household appliances produce EMF. Electrical fields generated by the Kitty Hawk underground cables and the duct banks are grounded by the earth surrounding the cables, so electric fields are undetectable at the surface. There are no above-ground electric fields for buried cables. Several thousand studies have been conducted by agencies around the world to investigate the potential health effects from power line EMF. Studies have shown no health threat from public exposure of both EMF from power lines. Therefore, the EMF generated by the Kitty Hawk cables is not a health and safety concern. Secondly, I want to touch on the duration of construction. Construction will be temporary during one season in the off-season, and that's, again, October through May, not six years, as has been indicated by other sources. Beach renourishment projects will not be impacted because our Beach renourishment projects will not be impacted because our cable will avoid these areas. And home prices? In order to impair the value of a home would require negative impacts brought about by the project. There will be no visual impacts, no disturbance to the beach, and no above-ground infrastructure. Therefore, home values will not be devalued. And sources show that the average Sandbridge home has gone up by 40% since we announced the project in 2019. As I mentioned on the previous slide, there will be no direct electric field effects from the project's cables, because the electric fields of each of the power cores within the cables are to be contained by metallic sheaths and, most importantly, buried underground. Magnetic fields are produced by the flow of current and magnetic field strength and measured in what's called milligaus. Neither the Commonwealth of Virginia's Department of Health nor the federal government have adopted or regulate maximum exposure standards for public exposure to power line EMF. However, international guidelines do exist. The WHO and the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection limits EMF to 2,000 milligaus. So what does that mean? It means that the EMF modeling that was done for our projects at the transition joint bay, the cables which were located closest to a residence, have measured at four different locations, which you can see on the boards out there, and the closest location being the Sandbridge Dunes condominiums, found that at any given point, the magnetic field generated was less than 100 milligaus, or less than that of a light bulb. The project will result in $2 billion in direct and indirect economic benefits to the region. This impact will be from construction spend, an increase in household earnings due to the jobs created by the project, and an increase in the taxes paid, which you can see here on the slide. 800 new jobs annually for 10 years in the region have been anticipated from an economic impact assessment that was conducted for the project, and the project will take advantage of Virginia's unique port infrastructure and maritime expertise to create a new offshore wind cluster. Avangard anticipates spending at least $821 million on construction-related materials, labor, and professional services within the Hampton Roads region. Additionally, Avangard will be paying for the placement of up to six cables in the municipal parking lot via the easements, plus the acquisition costs for the onshore substation at Corporate Landing. As you can see from the slide, we've been doing public outreach since 2019. Our team has engaged with the community and disseminated information. We have team representatives serving on the Virginia Offshore Wind Development Authority and the Virginia Beach Mayor's Offshore Wind Commission. Additionally, Kitty Hawk team members have collaborated with the economic development to encourage and recruit new companies to come to Virginia Beach. We've established an office in town center to further engage with community members, and we've supported a variety of festivals, including the Neptune Festival, fishing tournaments, and other outreach events. We held an open house in April of last year, sending out over 7,000 invitations to folks' residences here in Sandbridge, as well as their primary residences out of state, if applicable, so that we could garner the participation of those folks within the region. As I said, engagement is ongoing. It's not going to stop at any point in time. The opportunity for community input and our outreach efforts are only going to increase. Our offshore wind engagement director, Ashley McLeod, who's here this evening, is available and willing to provide project status updates. And here's an example of some of the ongoing sessions planned, as well as sponsorship events. Our team of experts is here this evening and available to answer any questions people may have. We applaud the City of Virginia Beach's investment into offshore wind thus far, and we look forward to supporting your future efforts. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening, and we look forward to answering questions.
Any questions today? Rosemary.
So it's going to be 85 feet deep, is that correct?
So the methodology for bringing the submarine cables offshore to onshore will be used in a pipe 85 feet deep that will connect to a transition joint bay in the parking lot that will be in an excavation depth of nine feet.
So after they get to that deck, then it'll only be nine feet deep?
The cables will be in...
From there until to Corporate Landing.
So the duck banks along the road to Corporate Landing will be buried at a minimum of three feet or greater, depending upon co-location with the city's utilities. So we're working right now with the city. They have a 30% design for the various projects, so we're coordinating with them to be sure that our duck banks can coexist and be located within the same areas as existing utilities.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this point? Michael or Chris?
And then Barbara. Thank you for the presentation. We've discussed a lot about economic development in this project. Can you tell us what specific permanent jobs will secure in Virginia Beach as a result of the landfall, cable installation, and substation construction?
So the construction itself, we would be using local unions, as we've done in securing PLAs and other projects such as Vineyard Wind. The onshore substation will be physically manned, so there will be a requirement for folks to be manning that substation. Engineers, Avangard has 40% of its workforce as veterans, so we anticipate building upon the existing naval population and military population here to fulfill the engineering requirements that will be needed for the project. And I can share with you the economic impact assessment, which will go into much further detail or give you the abridged version if you'd like.
Barbara.
I really want to hear all the comments from the audience, and I will have many, many more questions, but just a couple of things that triggered from what you've said. And I know that our easement question-only deals with the Sandbridge because the right-of-way of our, or the use of our right-ofways along the road's sort of not entirely our discretion. So from Sandbridge to Corporate Landing, you showed your preferred route in red, and I know that part of this will be in the yet-to-be-constructed right-of-way for Nemo.
Correct.
But what about the existing roadways? I'm thinking about the existing parts of Nemo, Upton Drive, I think Culver. To get to Corporate Landing, you're going to have to go underground...
Correct.
...in a lot of areas where the roadways are already constructed. How are you going to get there?
We will be putting duck banks underground in the right-of-way off the road in the shared-use area. So for the 7B portion, we will be doing HDD in the more sensitive areas. In fact, we met with Public Works just a few days ago to talk about where they are in the process in terms of the NIPA process and how we can coordinate with our contractors in the depths required for that area. But yes, it will be underground, as I mentioned, three feet at a minimum, and it could be more in certain locations, but it won't be in the roadway itself.
So you will not go under any of the existing roads?
Right, we will be in...
In the right-of-way. I'm just thinking some of those areas that are going through already existing residential areas don't have a whole lot of right-of-way there, so... But I'll certainly be interested in that capability later. Also, you indicated that the reason you are important to go to Sandbridge is that you are going to be selling your energy in Virginia, not North Carolina. Is that... Did I read that correctly in the...
That is absolutely correct. So it would go into the PJM system, of which Dominion is a part, and the grid is located at Corporate Landing Substation. So we would be tying into the grid there for dissemination within the regional transmission system.
I know so little about this. I really shouldn't ask questions because I show my lack of understanding. So you will be initially, I thought you would be going to Fintris.
Nope, that is Dominion.
Corporate Landing?
That's a completely different project, yes. That's the Seavow project.
So you are going to be selling your energy from the Corporate Landing Substation?
Correct.
To whom?
We're working on that at the moment. We don't have an offtake agreement finalized.
You don't have to do all of the State Corporation Commission?
We will. So we have not yet filed our SEC application, and one of the final steps in the permitting process is to secure land rights, which would be the deed of easement at Sandbridge.
Well, there are still a lot of unanswered questions. I'll keep them questions for later.
And just to be clear, and as a reminder, we haven't started the state permitting process yet.
But we have to make our decision before we know what those decisions are going to be, and once we make our decision, we're stuck.
Well, we have... We have a construction and operations plan for the project that is available right now that details mitigation, any environmental impacts, and shows how we've minimized those impacts for onshore and offshore.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Rocky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Higgins, I have a question about the... You're very optimistic to say, one, you'll get this done between October and May 15th, with supply chain delays and things that we've seen over the past couple of years. Do you have a fallback plan on that? Because we're often faced with ice and wind and stuff, so there is some setbacks. So that is optimistic to think that we can get that done in that amount of time. And what I'd like to hear is what are the alternatives to that? What happens if we don't?
Sure, and that's a fair question. So for the Vineyard Wind One project, for example, the photos that I showed of the parking lot, that was conducted in approximately 12 weeks. So it can be done. And when you refer to supply chain constraints, I would say that those are more applicable to the offshore components, such as the foundations, the blades themselves, and the cables, not so much the engineering design at the municipal parking lot.
And just a follow-up to that, the... I know you talked about community engagement, and I heard some heckling when we said "community engagement." I don't know if we use the term "off-season," and we say October to May 15th. I've been to Sandbridge around Easter time, and it's pretty busy down there, so I don't know if the off-season is really an off-season. So I was just wondering what the methodology was to say that that's an off-season to May 15th?
That was through conversations with city engineers, and I can certainly revisit that, and that's good information.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Barbara.
Just to follow up with what Mr. Holcomb just asked, I mean, when you talk about the construction occurring in one season, you only are talking about the Sandbridge cable landing. You're not talking about getting all the way to Corporate Landing.
That's correct. So let me clarify. When I mentioned one season, it would be concurrent work in the parking lot and the Sandbridge Road section of the onshore route, which is the 1.5 miles of the total six miles.
So how long will it take you to do all the way to Corporate Landing?
We're estimating 24 months.
So a two-year project?
Approximately. For... Well, those, some of those segments can be done concurrently, but they would move along. It wouldn't be the whole disruption of the road. It would be segments at a time.
But people in that corridor are going to be impacted for 24 months with the construction?
Not in the road itself.
Well, the right-of-way. Those things kind of spill over into the roads. I mean, anytime there's some construction or something that happens along the side of the road, it's going to affect the traffic, so... Two years, okay, thank you.
Okay, Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for the presentation. I have a couple of questions, one of which I just thought of as Councilwoman Henley asked about the duration of the construction outside of the easement area and to the Corporate Landing site. That two-year timeframe, is that, does that coincide with some of the other construction activity that is going on along Sandbridge Road and Nemo Parkway? So are we able to avoid disturbing that area twice?
We, thank you for raising that. We are currently coordinating with the Department of Public Works, and their estimated construction start date is 2026, which is what we are planning on, no sooner than 2026. So yes, we are hoping to do them concurrently.
And the duration, and this probably isn't for you, but this is for Public Works, but the duration of that road construction project would conceivably be in excess of a year?
I don't know the answer to that question.
LJ shaking his head, yes, okay. A couple other questions for you, if you don't mind. I wanted to give you a chance to clarify because I heard something, just beach access, and I wanted to allow you another opportunity to just clarify whether or not beach access would be impaired during the horizontal drilling and the construction of the underground facilities near the parking lot.
Yes, thank you. The portion of the parking lot south of the market would be restricted, but beach access around that area would not be restricted, so the parking would be restricted.
Okay.
Because the vessel, so to understand HDD, the vessels are about a mile or so offshore, bringing this tube under the sand and going, popping up into the parking lot. So again, it's approximately 85 feet deep under the beach.
Okay, and then it ultimately will get to about nine feet under the parking lot?
That's right.
Okay. And I know we've obviously received a lot of emails and communications about this project, and many of them raised concerns about the electromagnetic fields and the health risks or perceived health risks. And, you know, I think we all, as a council, are sensitive to those kinds of concerns, and I know you've begun to address them in the couple bullet points that you did, but those health concerns, along with, I guess, environmental concerns, are some of the other ones that have, you know, risen to mind, in my eye at least, and I know that our area is a, you know, it is a place where migratory birds, you know, pass through, and, you know, whales traverse, obviously, up and down the coast. So I know you're not necessarily an environmental expert or health expert. You had mentioned that you had brought some experts with you. I don't know if it would be appropriate, Mr. Mayor, if we could maybe have a little bit of elaboration on some of the health issues that were raised and some of the environmental questions that were raised. And so I'm going to leave that one hanging for a second, but the last one, the last question I have for you is about process. So this process that we're in today is because it was... So this process that we're in today is because it was requested by the community and the council. The decision point for the council going forward is whether or not to have a public hearing on this? Is that correct? So there would be another public hearing and another opportunity for input and further community engagement, as far as I understand it. Is that correct?
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. I would love to hear a little bit more about the health and the environmental, if that's possible.
Okay, Jen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'm tracking and trying to follow the order of things as they've been presented in some of the questions that we've heard. And I don't know if this is right. I'm assuming that there is no customer, because nothing is formally developed yet in terms of your ability to start the process. And so if this were to go forward, what would be a prospective customer that would purchase energy like this? Like, what would that look like, or what could that look like?
Sure, and we are in conversations with a variety of potential project partners, off-takers. Those include Dominion, private companies such as Amazon, Meta. As you very well know, there's a whole host of data centers located here, and they have their carbon reduction mandates. And so they would need renewable energy to fulfill those mandates.
Okay, Amelia, and then Sabrina.
Again, thank you for your presentation. One of the things I was talking about or looking at, one of your presenters mentioned to me consultants about your impact with Dominion. Are they going to be purchasing places or some of their energy source through you or not? There's no connection?
So as Counselor Rouse just mentioned, one, or asked, rather, one of the potential project partners or an off-taker could be Dominion. So we, maybe I'm not understanding your question.
Right, so it's not definitely that they may work with you?
That's right. So they're developing their own project, the Seaval project, which is on a different timeline and going, as Councilmember Henley just pointed out, going to the Fentress substation. So we are, we don't have any contractual relationships at the moment with Dominion. We're pursuing two different projects, both of which could meet the Virginia Clean Economy Act's goals. So the Seaval project right now could meet the first tranche of offshore wind for the Energy Act, and we could meet that second tranche.
All right, thank you. The next thing, you mentioned about 800 jobs. You mentioned the veterans. What happened to the regular laypeople? Are you going to spend time to do some training for people who are not, you know, veterans?
Absolutely, and we will model that after other projects we've worked on, such as the Vineyard Wind One project, where we have agreements with the Mass Maritime Academy, for example, New Bedford Community College. So we would work and develop curriculums with the local colleges. And we've seen the success rate, and I can provide further information for you. But we've had a few public meetings where potential employees have shown up, and it's been overwhelmingly successful.
Okay, and just to clarify, what you mentioned in the parking lot, it is something that we won't really see once you're done.
That's correct.
Or a flat, like a manhole that's flat.
That's right.
So tourists coming in wouldn't be watching out for a hump to get over.
No, and I can direct your attention to one of the boards that we had out there, which shows the parking lot at the Barnstable location before, during, and after. And the parking lot was restored to better than the original condition.
Okay, and my last part, where you mentioned the Parkway working alongside, what I'm gathering is when you're through, it should really kind of enhance. It won't be something that is ugly.
That's right. Yes, we would repave and resurface.
Okay, thank you.
Sabrina?
Thank you, and good evening. I've spoken with some of the residents, and one of their concerns is in terms of the construction in the roadway, emergency vehicles. What's the plan when, you know, there is an event or something that happens and someone needs emergency services?
Well, there, we won't be working in the roadway, but there certainly, to acknowledge your point, there will be some lane closures. So we have not yet developed a traffic plan, but we will with the city to be sure that emergency vehicles and any other vehicles traversing those particular areas can get through. Clearly, that would be a concern of ours as well.
Absolutely, and I think that would be certainly a high priority for you to address. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Worth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Can you, this is a huge project, construction project that will take multiple years. Can you speak to your track record here in the United States and abroad? Any labor disputes, any run-ins with government, with businesses, citations, lawsuits, anything like that?
I will defer to my colleague, because I, as the project director, my primary focus is on this project and those within the United States. But I will call on, where's Eric? Oh, here he is. Eric, did you hear the question? Okay. So this is my colleague, Eric Thoma, Vice President of New Project Development.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you very much for inviting us. I appreciate it. So track record, we're currently constructing the first offshore wind project in the United States at Vineyard Wind One. And that project does have a project labor agreement with the local unions there. To my knowledge, we not had any citations or things of that nature, or labor disputes with any of the international projects that we've done as well. We currently have 1.3 gigawatts that are operating at, I think, three different locations in Europe.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Yeah, Rosemary?
Would you please email us this presentation?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, I think we can move on and hear from the people. Thank you. And folks, to everyone in the gallery, may I ask that we respect all the speakers and, you know, the cross-talking and keep it to a minimum. And once again, let's be respectful to each other. Thank you.
The first speaker is Jason Bourne. After Mr. Bourne, I'm sorry, Joe. I was thinking about the movie. I apologize.
Welcome.
I apologize, but let me get the next speaker, let me get the next speaker in queue as well. I'm so sorry. The next speaker will be Will Fettie.
A little jocularity to get things started.
All right, well, good evening. My name is Joe Bourne. I'm a full-time resident in Sandbridge Beach. Just over 30 years ago, Sandbridge Beach was in trouble. Serious erosion issues made life there unsustainable. At that time, the community stepped up to resolve the issue. Property owners volunteered easement rights. Sandbridge property taxes were increased to support the formation of a special service district, and TIF plans was implemented, all with the goal of Sandbridge self-funding its rebuilding efforts. This effort has been a great success. Five renewishments have been completed. Roadways and basic utilities have been restored. Public access has been enhanced, and our beautiful beach attracts over 200,000 rental guests each year. Local visitors take advantage of our ample parking year-round. Construction activity is robust. Property values have grown from 206 million to over 1.7 billion. We generate over 200 million each year in tourism and pay tens of millions in city taxes. We have accomplished this without placing a financial burden on the city. We paid our own way. We have no quarrel with that. It's fair, and it's what we signed up for. Avangrid sees our stable beach as an asset to be taken advantage of, a cost savings for their project. But their project puts our investment at risk. The proposed construction will have a direct impact on property values, tourism, and tax revenues, despite the assurances, as much as 500 million during construction and beyond. This is a major disruption to our lives and livelihoods. After all we've done and invested, this would be a serious breach of trust between the community and the city. This is just one of a long list of questions and concerns we have. Several of us have reached out to City Council for an opportunity to meet, to share our research, our questions, and our concerns. Three have taken the time to meet individually, and that's an opportunity we appreciate and one that we seem to benefit, that all seem to benefit from. But that's only three of 11. You've met with Avangrid on multiple occasions, and I know you're all very busy. But please, give us the same opportunity you've given them. Be willing to sit down, speak with us, and treat us like we have a contribution to make to this process. If that is too great a request, then maybe this is one project too many, and you should just say no to Avangrid right now. You have given us each three minutes. Avangrid has had over three years. We deserve to be heard. Mr. Mayor, I submitted this list of questions to the city clerk prior to the meeting, and I would like to ask that they be added to the minutes.
Yes, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Council.
The next speaker is Will Fettie, and then Joan Davis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Will Fadu in District Three. Full disclosure, I am the Vice President of the Virginia Maritime Association, which works heavily in offshore wind. I'm also the Chair of the Virginia Offshore Wind Development Authority under the State's Department of Energy. However, today I'm here in my role as a citizen of Virginia Beach for quite some time. Now, you've heard all the data points on the economic development opportunities that this project will bring to Virginia Beach. You've also heard about the clean power, that this is going to bring to over a million homes, and also how this is going to allow us to meet the Virginia Clean Economy Act. You've also seen the figures and the maps and everything, so I'm not going to go into those. But I do want to highlight that for all of those figures to become a reality, all the jobs, all the economic development, the clean power, power has to come ashore. Building the projects offshore is only one part of the equation, and at some point, like I said, those cables have to land. Now, you've also heard in many of the presentations, including from projects, the other projects such as Seaval with Dominion Energy, that there are only a limited number of places that power can come ashore. In Q1 of 2024, Boam is looking to open lease areas for even more projects in the Central Atlantic region. That creates more opportunities for projects to sell clean power to the East Coast and continue to drive the economic development opportunities that we have in the regions. However, I will say that developers, both nationally and internationally, are watching very closely these type of decisions that are being made here in the near future about this project. And it's really about what kind of signal the city of Virginia Beach is looking to send to the offshore wind community about how serious we are about meeting our Clean Economy Act goals and creating these economic development opportunities. My good friends at the Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority are spending significant time and investments into attracting businesses from the offshore wind region into Virginia Beach, and they're doing so successfully. So in order to really capitalize fully on those investments, we need more projects off the Central Atlantic coast to drive investments and make some of these temporary offices, long-term offices, long-term factories, et cetera. So I do ask, again, as a citizen of Virginia Beach, that Virginia Beach really considers what signal they're looking to send to the international market and the East Coast as we continue to move towards establishing ourselves as a hub for offshore wind construction and support activity along the Central Atlantic region, as well as meeting our clean energy goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Joan Davis. After Ms. Davis is James Horn.
Hey, Joan, how you doing?
Rather not be here. But hi, Mayor Dyer, and Vice Mayor Wilson, and counsel, and city manager. My name is Joan Davis, and many of you know who I am, obviously. And I guess we've come here tonight because we've always been successful in dealing with many issues over the decade, but carefully communicating with their truths. First of all, Avangrid is a Spanish-owned company. That's number one. Second, if it's such a great deal, I'm sure Kitty Hawk would love to have the project. Third, I cannot believe so many of the slides were misspelled. It's not Sand Ridge, it's Stand Bridge. So obviously, somebody hasn't done their homework on the slides. So they really don't know where they're coming. Fourth, I have so many neighbors and community people here tonight. And if you don't mind, I'd like them, those that are in opposition of Avangrid, would you please stand up? Okay, that shows you a considerable amount of your people here are tonight in the opposition of Avangrid. We're also a little upset at the fact that Avangrid has had five years, not three, five years to deal with this, and they've been coming back and forth to City Council speaking. Where we have three minutes to speak tonight. They've had not only their presentation in the foyer, but they've also come in here and spoke over an hour and been able to answer all kinds of questions. And then they're going to be able to come back and answer whatever they want to, 10 minutes after we finish talking. And we would like independent studies done, not Avangrid studies, because anybody that's paying for their own studies is going to have what they want it to say. We would like our own independent studies done by the city. And we just really would appreciate you not considering this project for Sandbridge. I'd personally like to thank Councilwoman Henley, Councilwoman Wooton, Councilwoman Berluci for all meeting with us. We truly would love for you to hear our presentation, at least hear the other side of the story, because all you're hearing is one side right now. And please, consider listening to it, if you do not mind. We'd appreciate it. But please do not consider Avangrid for our area. Thank you.
The next speaker is James Horn, and then Pat Burns.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Horn. I'm the Vice President of the Sandbridge Beach Civic League. We, in early 2022, in February, formed a Subsea Cables Committee to investigate two projects coming, proposing to bring subsea cables onto Sandbridge Beach. The last time I had the opportunity to speak before this board was in support of one of those projects. However, in this case, I can't do that. We investigated Avangrid's information that they provided in the public. Unfortunately, a good many of the appendices that they submitted to BOAM were redacted from public perusal, including their safety management plan and their analysis of the landfall at Sandbridge Beach. We asked numerous questions concerning, not EMF, but specifically magnetic field strength and its impact on people who have medically implanted devices. It is, five gauss is the magic number. At five gauss, it isn't, it may have a problem. If your pacemaker, or your insulin pump, or your defibrillator sees five gauss, it will go into an alternative mode. And it's not a question of it may, it will. You can look it up. You can look at your device manufacturer. They definitely warn the patients that wear those devices for longevity that this is a problem. So we asked those questions. It took them until the 6th of April, when they first answered that it would be roughly 200 times the limit posed by the International Commission on Ionizing Radiation. They then, on the 7th of June, sent an email saying, no, that was wrong. It will be now zero magnetic field, which defies the laws of physics. And then finally, on the 20th of June, they said, no, it'll be about 0.7 gauss. So in other words, about 14% of that limit, about like a hair dryer, is what they said. This is 3.6 gigawatts of power going under, three feet underneath your feet. Okay, I'm not willing to make that kind of bet. Anyway, at the Civic League meeting on June 20th, '22, we passed the following resolution unanimously, and I'd like to read it to you. The Sandbridge Beach Civic League strongly opposes the Kitty Hawk offshore power project from moving forward. The design as proposed poses significant health and safety concerns to the people of Sandbridge Beach, the neighboring communities, and the visitors to the area. Project construction will have significant damaging environmental impact to Sandbridge. Project construction will have significant damaging environmental impact to Sand Bridge Beach, to Back Bay, and surrounding neighborhoods. Project implementation will be profoundly disruptive.
Thank you very much, sir. If you can give a copy of that to the Clerk.
I will. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Pat Burns. After Ms. Burns is Hatcher Jeter.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Pat Burns. I'm a concerned citizen of Virginia Beach. I've been a resident of Virginia Beach for 50 years, actually over 50 years. I've lived in three different neighborhoods. I raised my children in Windsor Oaks West. In 1969, I discovered Sand Bridge Beach, and I've been coming to it ever since. This was our go-to beach every weekend while raising my sons. I live in Sand Bridge now for the past 19 years. I am strongly against the North Carolina Kitty Hawk windmill cables coming through the main hub of Sand Bridge Beach, disrupting the peaceful lifestyle here and the public beach and parking lot behind our only supermarket. I'm against the EMF field high voltage cables going under our public beach where people sit relaxing, not knowing what's happening beneath the sand. And I'm also against these large railroad-sized containers that'll be in our parking lot. Our parking lot is used year round, and as you could see at Easter, one of you mentioned that the parking lot was full. This is very personal to me because I have a son, Tom, who lives in Richmond. He was the lead surveyor for many years, surveying properties in Virginia Beach, in Virginia, North Carolina. He was working mostly under the EMF high voltage transmission lines. He started having headaches and then seizures. He was in two automobile accidents. Fortunately, he didn't die, and he didn't kill anybody. But his company put him on disability, and he can no longer drive. And this is very upsetting to me and him living in Richmond, and it's very frustrating for him. He's on medications, but still, he has episodes seven years later. I'm not against clean energy and windmills, but there are a lot of concerns that have appeared this year, and I think more research and studies may need to be done. There is a viable option for Avangrid to live or to keep their cables in North Carolina. If you check, please check the documentation of the four sites they listed as possibilities. You will see one site in North Carolina that makes much good sense rather than Sand Bridge. I love my city, I love my beach. Sand Bridge is the loco's go-to beach for hundreds of our residents and others. Any warm day, that public parking lot behind the market is full. I'd like you all to think about, I think all of you took this job because you care about your city and the citizens living in it. It should not always be about the dollars, but the quality of life. So please do not support an outside company that's going to disrupt our public beach and community for many years, besides the health dangers of these high voltage cables that are going to be near our citizens living in and along the.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
The next speaker is Hatcher Jeter, and then Russell Smith.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Council, for allowing me to speak. I'm not as elegant as most of these people. I'm very opposed to this project. We are recently, we bought down here in Sand Bridge on 2017, and we came down here because we loved the way the community was and is. And then you hear about this project coming in, and you see a lot of information, but you question its validity because it's like, I hate to say it this way, lawyers have a way of spinning things, and you don't know whether it's true or false. And there's no matter how much research you do, you always come up with a question, is it real? And I don't think it is. I think we really need to step back and not allow this to happen and let outside sources come in and investigate and evaluate how this project is going to do. Because this is our lives, this is our homes, and I love Virginia, I love Virginia Beach. I've been here all my life, and I would hate to see this place destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Russell Smith. After Mr. Smith is Charles Kelly.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thanks for this opportunity. My name is Russell Smith, and I'm a resident of the Sand Bridge Dunes Condominiums, 204 Sand Bridge Road. I'm also the President of the Sand Bridge Dunes Unit Owners Association. On behalf of our 74-unit community, I speak for the common interests relating to the proposed Kitty Hawk project. I also speak in support of and in addition to the other objections to the project. We owners of Sand Bridge Dunes are at ground zero. Bear with me on this. On June 24, 2021, the Champlain Towers South in Surfside, Florida tragically and suddenly collapsed, killing 98 residents. Over times, there were shown to be many contributing reasons for this event. Photos of the Champlain property appear akin to the location of Sand Bridge Dunes Condominiums. Multi-story building, two little sand dunes, Atlantic Ocean. In early '22, a class-action lawsuit was filed naming a multitude of defendants, three of whom were involved in the construction of an adjacent condominium building to the Champlain. They were N5 geotechnical engineering. They studied the safety factors in building on that land and on the water underneath. GEO Sonic's Vibrotech vibration monitoring services provided at the Champlain Towers South during that construction. Many violations were indicated, but nothing done. And ASAP installations, drilling, and sheet piling at the adjacent condominium. These three were in the liability class of the class-action suit. The suit was settled in record time for such a complex matter, less than two months. The three mentioned defendants, insurance carriers, offered a total of $30,250,000 to the class, this out of the total settlement of over $1 billion. I have a letter of response from the city dated October 5, 2022. This offers ground vibration monitoring for our building during the NIMMO project, where we are close in, and we thank you in advance. In the same letter, on the second page, we requested the same vibration monitoring program during the length of the possible Kitty Hawk projects. It reads at the very end, "These projects are private and not funded nor administered by the city. However, we do have review and approval authority over these projects, and will require the private developers provide a construction vibration monitoring program to the extent we can by code and regulation." That concerns me. If this project begins, and we pray not that it does, we ask that you not only protect Sand Bridge Beach, but also protect Sand Bridge Dunes Condominiums. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
The next speaker is Charles Kelly. After Mr. Kelly is Jane Steely.
Good evening. How are you, Rosemary? Councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Charlie Kelly. I live and sell real estate in Sand Bridge. This council is faced with a major decision that could impact the City of Virginia Beach for decades. We're asking you to do the due diligence needed to answer certain key questions, and I'll name a few. Why does Avangrid state EMF levels seven times lower than Dominion? Exactly what sections of the transmission lines will be above ground? As I understand it, their proposal says in certain areas, they will be above ground. What will the impact on the citizens, businesses, city taxes, and tourism be as a result of these lines? Who pays for the decommissioning after the end of the 25-year lifecycle? If Sand Bridge can no longer receive the sand replenishment because of this project, what's the financial impact on the city when real estate and tourism taxes plummet? If sand replenishment costs double or triple because of this project, who pays the incremental What if Avangrid or their US version of this bigger company goes belly up? What happens to the half-installed system? If there's a power disturbance to this system, how is it resolved without landlocking and trapping residents of Sand Bridge, where we have only one road in and out? If EMF radiation levels from transmission lines are found to be unsafe, who bears the burden of rectifying this? It's common practice to have buffer zones along high-voltage tower lines. What does Avangrid say in regard to buffer zones? In the presentation out in the hallway, I talked to some of the folks about whether they would be above ground or below ground, and they said their preference is to be below ground. I'm like, well, what are you going to do? I know your preference would be, but it costs substantially less to go above ground. And they said, well, we won't know for a year and a half because we're waiting to hear from government agencies whether we can go below ground. There's so many open-ended questions, and I think one of the council members stated, you need to make a decision now when all these questions are still open-ended. I would like to suggest that the city hire an independent consultant to study this, who is qualified to understand the technical details here and also to do an economic impact study on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
The next speaker is Jane Steely, and then Jean Davis.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mrs. Henley.
Hello, Virginia Beach and Sand Bridge. I have not seen this many people from Sand Bridge in one room since our Oktoberfest, and we had an open bar at Oktoberfest. So this is.
We really can't do that here.
Okay, I can hint. Anyway, I am Jane Steely. I retired here after nearly 40 years in television news, and in the early 1980s, I was working in Buffalo at a TV station, and I covered the Love Canal crisis in Niagara Falls. If many of you remember, this is dating me age-wise, that's where over half the children born in the mid-'70s had horrific birth defects. In the 1990s, I was working in TV in Philadelphia, where an astute nurse at a hospital discovered an unusually high rate of deadly brain cancer in children who lived near a Sibogaiji plant in Toms River, New Jersey. Now, the connection between these two stories is the toxins in both cases had been dumped nearly three decades earlier, 30 years. Now, you might be asking, what do these examples have to do with our situation with the electric cables coming to Sand Bridge? Here's where I'm going with this. The dangerous health effect of Avangrid's high-power cables may not come to light for years to come. Many of us in this room, myself included, may not be alive to see this happen, but our children, our grandchildren, our friends, and our neighbors and visitors to Sand Bridge could be affected. Please do not make Sand Bridge a guinea pig for these cables. Dominion Energy is doing the right thing. They are bringing their cables through an unpopulated area. Sand Bridge does not need to be a doormat for this for-profit company that does not benefit us in the least. I, thank you. I strongly urge this council to do the right thing and reject this proposal. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mrs. Henley.
The next speaker is Jean Davis. After Mrs. Davis is Fran Dennis.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for letting us talk. I live in Sand Bridge Beach, and my name is Jean Davis. I went to the only open house for Avangrid on the 6th of April last year, and I was really amazed in the fact that there were many informative stations, posters to look at, but everyone you asked the same question gave you a different answer. Now, some of them were upfront and said, I don't know. So that was not very encouraging. They're proposing to put these vaults, trailers, whatever you want to call them. They are measuring 11 by 9 by 60 feet, and those are the ones to be buried with all these cables. I am very much concerned, too, about the EMF. Being a nurse, I'm sure, Mayor, you, being a health professional, can hear my concern. I really am asking you all to please, please, evaluate this. You are our speakers, we, the people. You want safe, we want to be safe. And please forgive me, but, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is something we do not want in our water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Fran Dennis. Fran Dennis. And after Mr. Dennis is Fred Stoddenmeyer. Mr. Dennis is first. Mr. Dennis, are you Mr. Dennis?
Yes, I am.
Yes, you're first. Thank you.
I'm Dave Dennis. I'm the operator proprietor of Sand Bridge Market. I have operated Sand Bridge Market, which is adjacent to this Sand Bridge Beach. City parking lots on both sides of my store. The beach was given to the county of Princess Anne County many years ago, 60 years ago, as a beach for the people of Old Princess Anne County. At that time, nobody lived in Sand Bridge. There were only a few houses, and the people from the outside of Sand Bridge needed a beach to live. It was, over the years, it continues to be the beach of the people of the southern part of Virginia Beach. They come to Sand Bridge Beach to swim, surf, they come to fish in the evening, they come to fish in the morning, they come to Sand Bridge Beach and they meditate, they walk their dogs. They come at all hours. The city of Virginia Beach has been a great caretaker for that beach over the years. For 60 years, that beach has been open 24 hours a day, 360 days each year, 65 days, and for 60 years, it's never been closed. That's quite a record. City has bought property and built additional parking and restrooms for the public. They've cleaned the restrooms, they've picked up the trash. It's a, it's a beach of the people, and it's a beach of the people of Southern Virginia Beach. It's not a tourist beach, it's not an attraction. It's a treasure. It was never meant to be used as collateral in a development deal. I do not believe that the council should betray that trust and encumber it or do anything to make it be different than it's been all this time, because the people need it, the people love it. It's about people and about the quality of life. I would hate to see it go away in my time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Fred Stoddenmeyer, Mr. Stoddenmeyer, and then Karen Waterville.
Thank you for letting me address the group tonight. My name's Fred Stoddenmeyer, and I live next door to Charlie Kelly. I've lived in Sand Bridge, first lived in Sand Bridge in 1962. In 1966, I bought an oceanfront lot for $1,000 down. So I've been through the floods and the terrible dangers. So I've been through the floods and the terrible dangers that erosion caused us, and I've watched Mother Nature turn around and build our sand back, give us beautiful dunes, and the broadest beach that we've had in my lifetime. So I was astonished to learn about the unanimity of the objections to this project. In looking into the major objections, I would like to address, first of all, the safety issue. We used to say in the Navy, safety is paramount, and it truly is. We can't jeopardize people's lives, but electromagnetic fields is knowable, measurable, and controllable. We don't need to be afraid of this boogeyman. Come on, folks, we're better than that. The second objection that I wanted to speak to was the boogeyman raised about Sandbridge Shoals and where we do our dredging and where we get our sand. That's sacrosanct, that nothing is more important to Sandbridge than getting sand to replenish our beach, which has saved our community. But when you look at the map, there's no interference there. The guys that do the dredging are professionals, they're got it by satellite positioning, and they're a terrific workforce. They're not going to jeopardize the situation in dredging sand by running into a conduit of electricity. Come on, we know better than that. The next thing is, we talked about the safety, and it was brought up, what about our children? This jeopardizes our children. This is another boogeyman. This is nonsense. Perhaps more parenting is indicated to allay that concern.
Okay, please, folks, let's respect the speaker. Thank you.
And finally, and finally, this is one of thousands of projects that are going to go across America to address the most difficult thing facing our planet, climate change. You worry about your children falling in a ditch. Well, what I'm worried about is our grandchildren finding it too hot to open the door and go out in 20 or 30 years.
Thank you, sir.
Sir?
Red light, sir. Thank you.
Time's up. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Karen Waterville, and then Pat Barton.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm in opposition to the Avangrid Renewables Wind Energy and Power Cable Project. I was shocked when I learned of an eco-changing ocean project destined to bring Sandbridge to its knees and more. Let me explain. I attended the June 2022 Sandbridge Beach Civic League meeting, where a Virginia delegate was a guest at the meeting. The Kitty Hawk project by Avangrid was on the agenda. Having never heard of such a project, I was shocked. What were wind turbines anyhow? When the meeting was concluded, the Virginia delegate passed by myself and several friends. We told him we were opposed to the project. The delegate said, quote, "Make a list," end quote, perhaps inferring it was going to happen, and perhaps inferring that Avangrid might do something nice for Sandbridge, like give us some money. Hope this is not a done deal. The most unbelievable part of this ridiculous project is that subsea cables would traverse 27 miles north from Kitty Hawk via subsea electromagnetic cables, which would cross Sandbridge Public Beach. This is certain to ruin the integrity of our beach. It would certainly cause health hazards. Since then, I have learned a great deal more about wind energy and wind turbines and the serious harm they do to the environment. I am now totally opposed to ocean wind turbines. The wind does not blow 24 hours a day. Where will electricity come from when there is no wind? As my life draws to a close, I am very concerned for all those who live after me. I want my family to enjoy Sandbridge Beach. I have been there, I have owned property there for 50 years, this year. It's not too late. Now is the time to get educated, council members. Plan some public forums, interview experts in the field of wind energy and wind turbines, reconsider your decision and the consequences and the mistakes you are making. Have a public referendum, there is still time. I pray this hearing is in good faith and taken seriously. Thank you for your opportunity to speak.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Pat Barton. After Mr. Barton is Janet Meyer.
Good evening, sir. How are you doing?
Good evening, I'm doing well, doing well. Good evening, Council, Mayor Dyer. Thanks for allowing me to come up. My name is Pat Barton. I'm a resident of Sandbridge Beach. I'm actually a fourth-generation resident. My great-grandmother and grandmother purchased a home there in 1958, and I moved there with my family in 1975, so I've got some history there. I own SBH Real Estate and have been active in that Sandbridge Market since 2005. I'm also a past president and current member of the Sandbridge Civic League. Here's what I think about this project. This will stigmatize Sandbridge Beach in a very negative way, similar to when we, almost 10-year period, when we had no beach at high tide. So during the late '80s into the late '90s, until we had the first replenishment, at high tide, you couldn't walk the beach. Guests stopped coming. You know, we had vacation rentals all around us, families that came every year, year after year, and they stopped coming because high tide hits in the middle of the day, you're not on the beach, you have to hang out at the house. So it really had a big impact. And I do feel like, and we were stigmatized that way, and we'll be stigmatized by these high-voltage power lines. We live in an era of soundbites. Very few people will dig into the issue. They will hear Sandbridge Beach, they will hear high-voltage power lines, and they will say, I'll go somewhere else. It's simple as that, right? So the other thing I'd like to share with you is, for three or four years in a row, I was representing the Civic League at the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association Conference in Washington, DC, representing the beach. Every time I went, I was approached by members from other beach areas, asking how the community put together such a successful beach re-nourishment project. I shared that as a community, we chose to tax ourselves and to ensure funding for the beach replenishment, and the ocean homeowners deeded a portion of their property to create a public easement. They were, you know, we were considered, we were considered the Gold Star Project for all beach re-nourishments in this country, right? So what I'm afraid is going to happen, we're going to go from a Gold Star to a red stoplight, which will be, stop, do not go. So I ask you to do the research and take this very seriously. This could have devastating implications to Sandbridge and the entire city of Virginia Beach. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Janet Meyer. Janet Meyer. And after Ms. Meyer is Elizabeth Belcher.
Good evening. My name is Janet Meyer, and I have lived in Sandbridge 46 years. I've seen many changes to and in this community, but the biggest impact on safety and security of this pristine beach has been the sand replenishment initiative of the 1990s. When we first moved to Sandbridge in 1977, we had a lovely, large beach with beautiful sand dunes, but over time, storms took away our sand and slowly encroached on the shoreline, putting personal property in jeopardy of collapsing into the ocean. To save our beach, first came the bulldozers, pushing sand back up to the dune line. When they did that, they uncovered the remains of an ancient Cypress forest that used to run down the beach line, sure proof that nothing stays the same with Mother Nature. She gives her resources and she takes them away. We have no control. Then came the bulkheads, finally, the replenishment. We paid for and continue to finance this program as a special tax district. Oceanfront properties gave up their rights to initiate this program. It is my understanding that our special tax district is for the sole purpose of maintaining the integrity of our beach. For Avangrid to attempt to piggyback on this program for profit would appear to be illegal since the required 2/3 approval of the landowners, which is needed to change, the special tax district has not been secured by Avangrid, and Sandbridge Civic League has unanimously voted against their landfall. This concerns me, as Avangrid would put our special tax district in jeopardy, because their right-of-way runs dangerously close to the borrow area that we harvest the sand from. If they own the right-of-way and there isn't another place to get sand for this project, all homeowners, visitors, and guests will be subjected to the diminishing beach we experienced in the 1990s. Avangrid would have effectively killed part of Virginia Beach. This is not acceptable. We don't want Avangrid's cables on our beach, we don't want the chaos this construction brings, we don't want their EMFs, we don't want higher cost of electricity this project will surely impose on us, we don't want windmills threatening the wonderful fish that migrate through our waters, and we don't want them coming ashore.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Belcher. After Ms. Belcher is Jim Belcher.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Beth Belcher, and I am another of the many Virginia Beach residents who can vividly remember Sandbridge, when our coastline was eroding so badly that we did not even have a beach to sit on at high tide. It was a scary time for oceanfront homeowners. When we had nor'easters, it was not unusual for many of our houses to flood. Coming to Sandbridge for the day wasn't a pleasant experience for local folks or for out-of-towners renting for the week. We needed a wider, stable beach to enjoy. Our sand replenishment program was a grassroots effort. Homeowners signed away their property rights, we paid a sizable sand tax, our real estate taxes increased, and every bit of that was worth it. Now, Avangrid is relying on our success to fund their project. Virginia Beach residents worked long and hard for a stronger, better beach, for the citizens of this city and our guests. Kitty Hawk Wind is not on our guest list. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jim Belcher. After Mr. Belcher is John Spillone.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight, and my family's owned a house in Sandbridge for almost 60 years, and we've been permanent residents for the last 10. And as a few other people have mentioned, watching the sand replenishment program has been one of the highlights of my family's residence here, and the program has been highly successful by anyone's standards and estimations. And to accomplish that success, it took so many years and tens of millions of tax dollars to rebuild Sandbridge Beach to create the flourishing economic tourism and property values that we experience today. Over the next six years, however, high-impact construction for the posed landfall of the Kitty Hawk Wind Project is going to negatively impact property values and rental income, not only for the properties in the vicinity of the landfall, but for all of Sandbridge. Now, Avangrid has said that they would be doing most of the construction work during the off-season, but as a couple of you pointed out, there really is no off-season anymore. And no one wants to spend a vacation having to endure unsightly construction and delays. Even just a 10% reduction in rentals and property values would result in an estimated loss of $2.4 million in tax revenues yearly, not to mention lower property resale values and lost rental income. Has any of this potentially devastating financial impact been factored into the economic benefits that Avangrid is promoting for the city of Virginia Beach? And will Avangrid cover any losses in rental business as well as property value as a consequence of this work? Also pertaining to finance, will Avangrid cover any additional anticipated costs associated with potential problems involved with the ongoing beach re-nourishment program in Sandbridge that will surely be impacted by this project? My guess is no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is John Spillone, and then Bob McMillan.
Good evening. Welcome.
Oh, good evening, Mayor, and thank you, and thank you, council members. My name's John Spillone. I moved to Virginia Beach 15 years ago, and I live in Sandbridge. I'd like to address some of the Avangrid talking points we hear in our community, and that many of the council members may have heard from your constituents. One, the project supports the Virginia Clean Energy Act. Well, no, it doesn't. Avangrid is not selling energy in Virginia. They do not have a power purchase agreement, as we heard earlier. Dominion's not interested, as far as we understand, and the Dominion offshore wind more than covers the requirements of the act through 2030. The remainder must be in place by 2050. There are complex grid issues to resolve, and we have time. Two, Hampton Roads needs to be the offshore wind hub. Okay, great, I believe that, but where Avangrid connects to the grid has nothing to do with that decision. That part of the investment will be made based on port facilities, adequate laydown for wind turbine components, and the availability of critical services largely developed to support the Dominion project. Three, the project impact is minimal. Does somebody have my board? Hold it up. The construction, according to their plan, is going to take four years. Now, I heard something different earlier, so we need to, you know, figure that out, but if all goes perfectly. This is a large-scale industrial construction project. The ongoing construction and destruction will impact Sandbridge property values, reduce tourism income, and associated tax revenues will fall. For the full period of construction, we could experience in Sandbridge as much as $500 million in negative impact, and that directly impacts Virginia Beach, not just Sandbridge, and it's not spread around Hampton Roads either. Four, they'll only be working in the off-season. Well, they can't promise that. These are specialized contractors and equipment that's going to be on-site based on their availability, overall schedule coordination, and as weather allows. It's all going to be deep underground. Well, not according to Avangrid's construction and operation plan. They maintain an alternative to above-ground the cables from Sandbridge up to Lagamar, and that's in the BOEM submittal. We haven't heard it publicly from them. And at that point where it's most shallow, the Avangrid documents are redacted from public view, so we can't really understand what the details of the construction are for the Sandbridge landfall. No impact to the sand replenishment, and we heard that earlier tonight, but with a small group of people and the Sandbridge Civic League, we've been talking to U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and they're in the process of assessing the costs, risks, and schedule impacts, and they don't know yet. And BOEM is evaluating...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
We just want to be heard. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bob McMillan. After Mr. McMillan is Michael Mendelson.
Hello, sir. How are you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the city council for the opportunity to speak. I had a lot I was going to say, but being a practical person, I've come to the conclusion that this Kitty Hawk Wind Project could be connected to North Carolina for a distance of six kilometers. And for those of us who measure in miles... And for those of us who measure in miles, that's 3.6 miles. Now, why would any corporation run electric lines for many miles past open territory, the Falls Cave State Park and the Wildlife Preserve, and bring it in through the only residential community south of Dabneck and the North Carolina Line? I'd like an answer to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, sir.
The next speaker is Michael Mendelson, and then Bobby Malati.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of council. I'm Mike Mendelson. I appreciate your time this evening. My wife Shannon and I have had the distinct pleasure of owning a home in Sandbridge for the past 15 years. While I strongly favor moving away from reliance on fossil fuels and I find the potential for offshore wind energy to be exciting, as citizens, we must thoroughly evaluate the potential risks and negative impacts of Avangrid's proposed project. A particular concern to me are the potential health risks associated with EMF. I am not a scientist, but I do find statements like those found on the World Health Organization, referenced by Ms. Higgins, to be alarming. Their website notes, as it relates to EMF, that, quote, "Gaps in knowledge about biological effects exist and need further research," end quote. Because something has not yet been proven hazardous does not mean that it has definitively been proven to be safe. Examples of products and technology once thought by scientists to be harmless until proven otherwise include cigarettes, X-rays, thalidomide, lead-based paint, DDT, and asbestos. Morten Thiauks engineers, you'll recall, assured NASA that the O-rings on the Challenger were safe, but they failed 73 seconds after liftoff, causing the agonizing death of seven heroic Americans. If you wouldn't feel 100% safe, 100% safe with Avangrid's cables running underneath your child's or grandchild's playset, don't allow it to be run under a public beach. If you wouldn't want six transition joint bays residing underneath your driveway, you shouldn't authorize their placement beneath a public parking lot. I'd ask the question, what happens if this technology is later proven to be unsafe? Or would you believe that Avangrid and the off-takers of its power would simply dismantle the Kitty Hawk turbines? You can't simply turn off power to a million homes. There's no switch that can be thrown to instantly replace that lost power with another source. So even if you, as elected representatives, can somehow get comfortable with the health risks of EMF, most people won't. Lingering health concerns and years of construction will negatively impact people's willingness to live and vacation in Sandbridge, which will materially devalue property in the community. To counteract what could easily be a 10% to 15% hit to property values, I'd propose that if the project is approved, it is done so with a required proffer of 3% of the total $7.5 billion project cost. I'd ask that City Council use that $225 million to directly counteract the economic harm to Sandbridge homeowners. If my information is correct, Sandbridge's aggregate tax assessments are roughly $1.25 billion. Assuming a city mileage rate and sand tax of just over 1% and even very conservative investment returns of 4.25%, the proffer funds would be enough to permit full elimination of property taxes in the community for roughly 30 years and would still likely leave a few million dollars to advance work on Nemo Parkway. I thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration this evening.
Hey, thanks a bunch for coming.
The next speaker is Bobby Malati, and then Joel Rubin.
I know you from somewhere. How you doing, Bobby?
Doing great. Thank you so much for affording us the opportunity to speak. I am speaking not necessarily in favor of Avangrid, but I'm speaking in favor of doing something. So here's my stuff. I believe we've reached a critical point in our history right now. Facing the reality of climate change could very well be the most important challenge humanity has ever had to manage. We speak often about elements of the predicted tipping points that manifest themselves in noted changes in weather and patterns, in melting ice caps, drought, and famine, as well as human migration from areas that can no longer sustain the needs of the indigenous populations. The challenge could be analogous to a slow-moving train wreck, and I choose to paint what we are experiencing in somewhat graphic language to drive home the point that kicking the can down the road is no longer an acceptable option. We must take a holistic approach to untying this Gordian knot. What this means is that we need to work together as a focused team with one goal: to reduce the carbon footprint by one-half by 2030 and achieve zero net carbon neutrality by 2050. Regardless of what path we choose to take, the operative word seems to be electrification. Electricity is gaining currency. We have already begun our solutions to the challenge. One of the most effective and efficient strategies is the expansion of our current wind turbine, energy, and solar solution. And yes, there are certainly negative consequences as we try to adjust, employ course corrections. But the alternative to these actions, doing nothing, is unacceptable and will result in consequences that we are certainly not prepared to weather. Fortunately, we still have a chance to slow down and maybe even reverse the effects of natural and human progressions that were unforeseen even as recently as 25 years ago. This will take a multi-pronged approach to identify the root causes of both natural and man-made. It will be a sacrifice, at least in the short term, to combat these causes. It will be unified, it's going to take a unified commitment of government, industry, and community to make every effort right now to ensure that our children and grandchildren enjoy the same quality of life. And there was another speaker that brought that same point up that we have enjoyed in our lifetime. Who speaks for these children and grandchildren if not us? Falling into the trap created...
Thank you, Bobby. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Joel Rubin. And after Mr. Rubin will be A. Petucci.
Joel, where's your fan?
My fan is actually sitting under my chair. I didn't think I would wave in front of everybody. Thank you. This is an honor. I've never spoken before this City Council before, and certainly not in this beautiful room. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I do want to tell you this, though, Bob, Mayor Dyer. You know my wife very well, she's sitting right over there. Today is our 43rd wedding anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
We're spending it with you. Look, I appreciate the challenge before you. I see, and I've talked to many of you about this over the last couple of years. As you know, I started this Wednesday campaign on behalf of Dominion Energy. Because I've been in this region for 48 years, I love this region, but I know that the opportunities we're going to have here for the future, for our children, for jobs, for the economy, is going to be based on the water and our location. It always has been, and it always will be. And the industry, which is in Europe right now, is coming to us. I just heard at an event a few weeks ago, when actually they were dedicating, I think you were there, the new Nacelle lab over Tidewater Community College that the city helped pay for, that we already have 10 international companies here in Virginia Beach, thanks to this industry coming here. Because of our location, because of our harbor, because of our port, we have an opportunity here in Virginia Beach and in Hampton Roads to be the center for clean energy in this country. We're not going to get another industry like this. This is the one that's for us. And as I said, I appreciate the challenge before you. I'm not speaking for Dominion Energy today. I'm proud to be working with them. I just really believe, and I've been across the city in the last two years and across this region, waving my fans and getting other people to wave the fans and talking about offshore wind energy. I've been in a lot of schools. I've been at competitions that kids are doing. And I can tell you, there's a genuine excitement about it. They are excited for the future because they finally see something new coming here that's very futuristic. Energy, energy, energy. So again, I thank you for this. Wind energy, renewable energy, it just makes me so excited that Hampton Roads and Virginia Beach are on the front line of that, and I certainly hope it will all come to fruition.
Thanks, Joel. Good seeing you. Happy anniversary.
A. Petucci. Next speaker is Gretchen Heel. After Ms. Heel will be Susan Kellum. Gretchen Heel. Are you Gretchen?
I am.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I am Gretchen Heel. I'm with the Hampton Roads Chamber. I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs. Though I will keep it brief, we are supportive of the project because not only of the economic development and energy, but continuing to solidify your investment that you've already made in offshore wind and making Virginia the hub. New York and New Jersey are coming on strong, and they want to take our jobs, and they want to take that title of being the offshore wind hub. And you guys have already put a lot of money into that, and regionally we have. The other thing I would say is it brings energy in, and yes, it will help with the Clean Energy Act in Virginia, but it will also help bring additional energy for all of the electric vehicles that you are going to be seeing coming online in the next few years. A few weeks ago, you had a report about that and the demand that it would require for if everyone in the city plugged in at one time, I think it was, that you would have a large increase on your energy load and demand. So just want you to consider those facts. The Hampton Roads Chamber is supportive of this, and we would ask that you all have a public hearing on it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Susan Kellum. Martin Joseph. And then Robert Rowland.
Hey, Martin, how you doing?
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor. City Council members, thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak to you tonight. I come to you as a member of the Chamber of Commerce here in Virginia Beach. And, you know, I'm also a longtime resident of the city of Virginia Beach. I love Sandbridge. Beautiful place. And, you know, one thing that we have been lacking in our business community has been a fourth pillar to our stool. You know, we have tourism, we have the port, and we have the military. And, you know, those have been great for us up until now. But now is the opportunity for us to capitalize on a new industry that's going to create thousands of jobs and also, you know, add to the tax base here in Virginia Beach. And, you know, I think, I believe, the estimate is about the Avangrid project would bring $6 million of additional tax revenue every year. And I believe that's sustainable for a very long term. So I'm very much in favor of being safe. So if Avangrid can prove they can safely and effectively deliver this project without harming Sandbridge, I am fully in support of this project. Thank you for your time.
Thanks a bunch. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Rowland. After Mr. Rowland is Gregory Lewis.
Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. My name is Robert Rowland, and although I live in the Ocean Park neighborhood along Shore Drive, in high school I used to surf at Sandbridge. I still go down there. It's a beautiful beach. I love it. I would not want to see it change. I'd like to express my support of this project specifically for the landfall easement in the Sandbridge municipal parking lot. This project offers a lot of benefits to the city, to Hampton Roads, to the Commonwealth. And I think one of the speakers who was here earlier asked you to take a holistic view of this project, and I would advocate that as well. You've heard a lot about the pros, much more about the cons. A lot of the benefits have been documented by Avangrid on their presentation. You can see these in other public documents. So I'm going to modify my comments a little bit and make them a little bit shorter. One thing that has not been mentioned is, again, big picture, how this project would foster energy independence, you know, getting away from oil and foreign oil. A point that I thought was interesting was that it would fight fossil fuel-induced climate change, especially sea level rise. That is a killer for this area. As you know, my statistics may be wrong. Hampton Roads, Norfolk specifically, and New Orleans are two of the metropolitan areas in the United States that are most threatened by sea level rise. Military, tourism, ports could be destroyed. Three legs of the stool. Somebody else talked about the fourth leg. This is the fourth. So to me, that's a big one. Long-term view, but very important. Another one that I think that's so important about this is that it will bring a new industry. I'm a native of this area. Tourism, ports, military. We need to diversify this economy. This is not a place where a lot of people leave this area, my daughter included, because there aren't jobs here. So you think about, you think about that, and it could really bring a regional brand recognition to Hampton Roads, put us on a different level. I think, you think about innovation. I think Mr. Romine at the beginning talked about this being a transformative project, and that it is. It's very similar to the Dominion Energy's Coastal Virginia offshore wind project. I just retired. I worked in the construction-related industry. I was very knowledgeable of that project. Look at what it's done for Portsmouth Marine Terminal and Lambert's Point, Fair Winds Landing. Big development projects, lots of money, lots of jobs. One statistic I saw that I found interesting was that approximately $900 million will be spent for construction in Virginia on this project. The vast majority of it...
Thank you very much, sir.
Vast majority in Hampton Roads. Thank you.
The next speaker is Gregory Lewis. After Mr. Lewis is Mason Peterson.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. In Semper Fi. Good evening, Mayor Dyer, council members, and fellow Virginia Beach residents. My name is Greg Lewis. I'm with the Future of Hampton Roads. Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to talk on this vitally important subject. I live in the, on the Shore Drive area, but have surfed quite a few times down at Sandbridge. Family's done vacation rentals down there in the off-season. We love the Sandbridge area. My stepson surfs there quite a bit. So we love that area and understand the importance and definitely hear all the concerns that are being echoed tonight. The future of Hampton Roads and Virginia Beach in particular is extremely promising. After retiring from the Marine Corps in 2016, my family and I have seen the tremendous growth happening in our region, infrastructure projects on our bridge, tunnels, and port, as well as upgrades on our military bases. Hampton Roads is growing and is poised to grow even further. We've got transatlantic cables coming, connecting us that will feed into a global information hub. Hampton Roads is home to the world's largest naval base and numerous other DoD facilities, all of which are also growing. All of this growth will demand significant amounts of sustainable energy. To be honest, I was initially skeptical of wind farms and understand many of the concerns folks have with them. The technology has steadily matured, and the data I've seen points to wind farms being an important component of a vibrant, resilient energy ecosystem. Advancements in the installation, maintenance, and recycling of windmill components have significantly improved since the first wind energy platforms were developed. Not only will this wind farm provide significant energy, it will provide an employment and education pipeline that will significantly strengthen the socioeconomic footprint in the region. Furthermore, there are a watershed of educational opportunities that the Department of Energy is currently offering to regions that are involved in energy innovation, like the Wind Energy Center of Excellence Solicitation. The Defense Department has also greatly increased its interest in resilient energy sources, particularly for installations, that are seeing an increase in energy demands for electric and hybrid electric vehicles and communications. The Defense Community Infrastructure Program is another pathway for this community to demonstrate its commitment to our nation. The Hampton Roads area provides a unique opportunity to explore wind and resilient energy solutions across all of the military services and the strategic port of Virginia. Our region and our city are seeing tremendous interest domestically and globally, as has been discussed this evening. International businesses coming over, Avangrid itself being an international business. We've just had the amazing Something in the Water Festival. We've got a state-of-the-art wave park in the works. Let's seize upon the tremendous opportunity to prudently bring in this technology and the energy, businesses, and jobs. and the energy, businesses, and jobs that will follow in its wake. We'll make sure to temper these efforts with meticulous data and foreign metrics so that we have a city and a region that is not only resilient and smart-
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
-but also wise. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mason Peterson.
Hi, I'm Aaron Peterson. I'm on the list, too. Would I be able to go before my daughter, Mason Peterson, as that's the way I-
I have you at the very end, ma'am.
Yes, go for it.
Mason Peterson, and then Emily Palmer.
Welcome.
Hello. My name's Mason Peterson, and I'm here because I'm directly affected by the EMF radiation. I have a rare glomas tumor in my finger, and I'm one of the youngest to have it in the United States. It directly affects my everyday life. Like, I've had to learn to live with it. I got it when I was 11. But it's a tumor that sits on my nail bed, and it runs up my arm. There's many things that make it happen. But if this project gets passed, our family's going to have to move because I can't be anywhere near, like, high radiation. This, like, it affected how things were growing in our yard. Our dogs got tumors from it, and I had mine removed twice. And after we figured out why, we had to move within two weeks of figuring it out because I couldn't live there anymore, or it would grow again. It started off only affecting me, like, once a week, and then as we kept living there, it would happen up to, like, eight times a week. But basically, if this project gets passed, I'll have to move. But thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Emily Palmer. After Ms. Palmer is Walter Parsick. Parsick, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Emily Palmer, and I own property in Sandbridge since 1985, and I live on the Oceanfront Lot. We came to Sandbridge because it was a peaceful community far from the tourist attractions of the Virginia Beach boardwalk area. Sandbridge, as you all know, is a special family-friendly vacation spot and a wonderful place to live, raise your family, and retire. I am very concerned about my community future because of the Avangrid project. We love the wildlife and fear that the spectacular show of whales breaching offshore and the pods of dolphins riding the whales will be impaired with the installation and construction of the wind projects. The Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, BOAM, and the National Oceanography Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, have acknowledged recently that there is a deadly threat of offshore wind development to marine mammals. See facts.org, April 27, 2023. They go on to say that sounds emitted from the pile driving and construction sites rank higher in decibels of what is humanly acceptable and painfully loud. Plus, these wind farms pose risks to the marine ecosystem that are not yet fully understood and need to be studied further. The construction also concerns me as a homeowner. The exposure to the noise and disruption of our daily lives, not only in the initial building of the facility that is put upon us, but also, once it's made, and the repairs that will have to be made as years go by, it's going to disrupt us again and again and again. I want to suggest to the council that you, like other people have mentioned today, conduct independent study of all the factors before you come to your conclusion. Not a company-owned presentation, but something that is independent with a knowledgeable source of these matters, and determine what will be best for everyone. I want to go on the record that I strongly oppose this Avangrid project coming through our community in Sandbridge. Thank you all for your time.
The next speaker is Walter Parsick. Teri Stevens. And after Ms. Stevens is Gabriella Mack.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Teri Stevens. While I am all for green energy, I am not for it at the expense, health, and quiet enjoyment of Virginia Beach residents and guests. I firmly believe that high-voltage wind cables should not make land on any public beaches. Avangrid should find an alternate location to drop the cables. Fellow citizens tonight have done a great job outlining current issues, so I encourage you to think strategically and long-term if you do proceed with allowing Avangrid to use any city right-of-ways. Again, I encourage Avangrid to find an alternate location to drop the cables. But think about 10, 20, or 30 years from now, when technology has changed and we are left with obsolete cables. In 2022, Avangrid had a net income of $881 million, and the parent company, Iberdrola, had a net income of $4.572 billion. That's net, not gross. A one-time sum of approximately $750,000 per cable one time is a drop in the bucket for these companies. I encourage you to think strategically, to be savvy, to think about your citizens, so future taxpayers are not left paying huge sums when right-of-ways need maintenance, roads need work, obsolete cables need to be removed, or if the city gets sued. Ask for at least $1 million per cable per year, every year, for as long as they are using our city beach, our city right-of-way, our city parking lot, and our city sand. In addition, ask them to power every city building every year for free. Again, I want to reiterate, an alternate location should be found. A public beach is not the location to be dropping high-voltage cables. Moving forward, though, I ask you to be smart and be savvy. This is a for-profit company. They will do what is in their best interest, not what is in the best interest of the city of Virginia Beach. That's your job. Councilman Remick asked a question. It's unfortunate that he left because he asked them point-blank if they have had any lawsuits or safety issues. A real quick Google check will show that Connecticut, in November of 2022, Avangrid was fined $4.48 million by state regulators for pandemic debt collections. A quick check of violation tracker will show that Iberdrola, the Spanish company, the parent company, had penalties over $33 million since 2000, with approximately $9 million of those dollars being for 96% violations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gabriella Mack, and then Serena Amerson.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Councilmen, Councilwomen, and the mayor. We appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Gabriella Mack. I came to Virginia Beach in 2021 after buying a retirement condo at the Sandbridge Dunes across the street from the parking lot that our president calls Ground Zero. It is the hub of our community. It also is across the street from the cables and the splicing vaults that are going to be put in there. When I came to this town, and I've been coming here a lot, I was, I came because of the peaceful environment. I came mostly because I have three grandsons who live in Virginia Beach, and I envisioned relaxing days on the beach and making great memories with them. That dream didn't last long. The very next year, in spring of '22, I became aware of Avangrid and the Kitty Hawk Wind Project through the Sandbridge Civic League. I was anxious about the noise, the dust, the vibrations, especially the electromagnetic fields from the proposed construction, since I am a cancer survivor. All this seemed to be happening too fast, and my dreams of my retirement were just, you know, shattered. Where was the community engagement? How come we didn't hear of information about this? After retiring in 2020, excuse me, before retiring in 2020, I was Vice President for a global scientific engineering and construction management firm with over 60,000 people worldwide. With my public sector experience and local government, I have over 35 years of experience working on large infrastructure projects, and I was shocked to discover that there was very little, if no, public engagement. Sandbridge was the most impacted of all communities, was left out of the equation, along with nearby communities, while the Department of Economic Development, in partnership with a for-profit private developer, Avangrid, has planned a future that will negatively impact our quality of life for decades to come. As a former public servant, I always believed it was our responsibility to put people first, people over politics, trusting that when people get involved, they support what they help create. And we also received much more sustainable outcomes when we engage people in the process. We feel that Avangrid and the city, Department of Economic Development, has disrespected us because they have not been in our community in any kind of meaningful way. As Avangrid comes before you to ask for these easements to implement their plans without answering these important questions and understanding what we lose in this process, I ask you, please, to take a pause. Stop, look, listen, and learn. We have been diligently trying to research and educate ourselves and educate the communities that are around us, because no one else has done that. We ask that you do independent studies and to validate the claims that Avangrid is making regarding human safety, cost, environmental impacts, local business, and job creation.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Serena Amerson. After Ms. Amerson is Sun Temple Helgren.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and City Council Members. My name is Serena Amerson, and I reside in District 8 and have often rented homes and visited Sandbridge. I am here this evening to share my support of the Kitty Hawk Wind Project, which has the capacity to generate clean energy, create jobs within Hampton Roads, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Avangrid Renewables is a leading clean energy initiative and is one of only three U.S. energy company peers to set 2030 carbon neutrality goals and one of a few major U.S. utilities to align with the country's target to decarbonize the U.S. power sector by 2030. According to the Office of Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy 2022 Offshore Wind Market Report, there's an unprecedented expansion of new leasing areas in the U.S. offshore wind pipeline projects. In 2021, the U.S. offshore wind energy pipeline increased by 14%, with the potential to generate 40 gigawatts. Over the last year, the Biden-Harris administration significantly expanded areas of the country available to offshore wind development, with six new lease areas auctioned in New York Byte, two in Carolina Long Bay, as well as plans to lease areas in California, Gulf of Mexico, Central Atlantic, Oregon, and the Gulf of Maine. According to a 2002 article in MPG Ocean Sustainability Journal, there has been exponential growth in the wind energy worldwide over the last decade. In 2018, more than 80% of the global installed offshore wind capacity was located in Europe. Renewable energy production growth should not lead to significant environmental harm. However, new project must be compatible with biodiversity protection and conservation objectives. All maritime industries have a responsibility to assess and adopt plans that consider an eco-based approach to ensure there is no compromise to healthy ocean and there is resilience of marine ecosystems. Marine life and environmental science concerns can be mitigated and prevented with innovative technologies. Avangrid is an industry leader in the environment, social, and governance efforts, and has been recognized as the world's most sustainable company by S&amp;P Global for two consecutive years, and also has been named among the world's most ethical companies for four. Preserving ecosystems and biological diversity is an essential condition for sustainable development and for a sustainable energy model. Avangrid recognizes these risks and continues to mitigate them. In closing, this project aligns with maritime initiatives in our regions. We can become a supply chain hub, offer skill training, and create new jobs to significantly increase our economic benefit. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sun Temple Helgren, and then Aaron Peterson.
Oh, it's kind of nerve-wracking being down here and-
No, you're gonna do fine.
First, I have to say a disclaimer. The views that I'm about to express are mine entirely, do not represent those of my employer, which is the United States Department of Energy, Office of Clean Energy Demonstrations. I'm here as a citizen of Virginia Beach. I also must disclose that I am a former Avangrid employee. I left the company in November. I was a senior offshore wind permitting manager. I had a great time there. I just moved on to something different, and I divested all of my stock, so I have no benefit from Avangrid and this project. I'm just here as a citizen. I came into this world in Virginia Beach. 1972, I was born here. I was raised here, educated, Lincoln Elementary, Virginia Beach Junior High at the time, now middle school, brand-new. When I went there, it was not First Colonial High School. I chose to raise my family here. We currently live in Southgate Neighborhood. We consider Sandbridge to be our beach. I'd like to remind everyone that the beach is a public resource, and all the citizens own it. I enjoy that beach. I never go down to the, what we call, the oceanfront because it is a tourist beach. Sandbridge is more the local's beach. I don't want anything to happen to Sandbridge. I also speak to you as a certified environmental professional. I've spent almost three decades as an environmental consultant, so I do know a little bit what I am talking about. I'd like to think that I represent the silent majority in this city, and I applaud the job that you all are doing. I understand how thankless it is, and I appreciate it. I just wish that you would consider the welfare of the entire city as you choose whether to move forward and approve this project or not. I would hate to think that the temporary negative impacts to some would outweigh the positive benefits to all and to future generations. So I just ask that you take that into consideration when you consider this project and use your wisdom and continue to move forward with the long-term visionary approach you seem to have taken with the city and our future. And I think this project will continue down that path. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great job.
The next speaker is Aaron Peterson. After Ms. Peterson is Sierra Stahlnerker.
Good evening.
Hello. I'm gonna ignore that previous ignorant parenting comment, but I do oppose this project. I moved my family to Sandbridge in winter, into a winter rental in 2017. We left our previous home in under two weeks. My husband transferred offices. My kids were two months into seventh and ninth grade, completely invested in school and travel sports, and we completely uprooted our lives. At one point, we were paying to live in four homes, but we only lived in one, just to escape EMFs, and ended up here as permanent residents. My 11-year-old was diagnosed with a glomas finger tumor. She told you about that a little bit earlier. They are extremely rare, accounting for 1 and 1.3 million soft-tissue tumors. Average age is 30 to 50 years old. It's often a seven-year diagnosis, and patients are misdiagnosed with back surgery for pinched nerves, a psychiatric misdiagnosis, chronic pain syndrome, and become addicted to dangerous opioids. At one point, she actually asked for her finger to be cut off, which has been reported in other patients. That was not an option. Mason had this tumor removed under her nail bed at 11 years old, and again at 13. Both of my dogs were diagnosed with rare, similar-looking tumors. We then made two more moves, one where I left my kids with my best friends so they could remain in the county where their school was in, and I figure out where to go. This tumor didn't show up on MRIs or X-rays. Many renowned hand and figure specialists were not confident taking on this surgery. Some didn't believe her, but it disrupted Mason's life so drastically- Some didn't believe her, but it disrupted Mason's life so drastically that Children's National Medical Center took her on as a patient. No doctor there, John Topkins or Inova Fairfax, had ever seen one or performed this surgery. Her doctor sent me a picture from the OR. This was her first, this was her first glomus finger surgery as a renowned pediatric tan surgeon. Her tumor takes about a year to grow, and we had lived there about a year. Cause unknown, which is a term you often hear regarding EMFs. I experienced EMF radiation poisoning as well, including every one of these symptoms: daily vomiting, dermatological issues, extreme fatigue, anxiety, depression, vertigo, and nervous system disorders. EMF damages cells and DNA and mutate genes. About 20 feet from our property line, we had a large power structure with lines running through our yard. Both neighbors had adult daughters who were mentally and physically incapacitated. The owner of the house we lived in could not have children. All of them lived there for many years. These are all symptoms of EMF radiation. If the Kitty Hawk Wind Project is able to make their way into our precious piece of land we call home, we will have to move. I believe my family is an asset to Sandbridge. We are all employed by local businesses and are active in our community. We don't want to be forced to be uprooted again and found our home about five years. I represent Boardwalk, Bandidos, and Sugar Shack when I say we oppose this project.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sierra Stonaker. Sierra Stonaker. Kathy Owens. After Ms. Owens is Enders Dickinson.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, City Council, thanks again for giving us this opportunity. My name is Kathy Owens. I'm a longtime resident of Virginia Beach for over 30 years, and full disclosure, I'm a member of ALDA. So we're all familiar with the term "not in my backyard," and for many instances, it is for good reason. In this instance, however, the mantra should be, yes, please, in my backyard. I live in the Shore Drive area, but I consider all areas of Virginia Beach to be part of my backyard. When one area of the city experiences prosperity or misfortune, we all do. This was recently highlighted when the flood mitigation bond referendum passed, with many votes coming from citizens who have never been directly impacted by flooding. The ensuing construction activity of these projects will disrupt many communities, but the final result will provide benefits to all city residents. The Kitty Hawk offshore wind project will do the same and more, which is why we want it in our backyard. It will disrupt communities, but the final result will provide benefits for all city residents by lowering the levelized cost of energy. And the company has diligently worked to provide the least disruptive solution. What's the more part? The parking lot street scape will be improved from what it is today, and the job creation retention here in Virginia will continue long after this disruption has ended. So yes, we definitely want this in our backyard. Thanks.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Enders Dickinson, and then Elaine Fecetti.
My name is, my name is Enders Dickinson. I'm a Sandbridge resident and visitor for over 60 years. I want to commend City Council for their support over the years and willingness to listen. First, Sandbridge is a priceless resource for providing a family-friendly environment. Family traditions span decades. We all want to be confident that that focus is sustainable. Safety is paramount. I'm concerned by this action. Despite expert opinions on safety, and there's no danger, the real impact of this action will be decided by those who use Sandbridge. If they perceive electric danger at 250,000 volts, the risk of economic loss is real. It's difficult to have safe family fun playing bingo on Wednesday nights when signs in the parking lot behind the market may read caution, high-voltage lines, electric lines. I've been told after construction, the only thing you will see is a single manhole cover in a new parking lot. Out of sight and out of mind is an affront to me as a homeowner. Once in place, it'll be a continual focus of concern. I don't believe anyone would want high-voltage lines next to their homes or near their kids. I conclude this action will be perceived as dangerous and therefore real economic risk. Secondly, our economic success is due to your leadership. This success depends on preserving a singular focus on Sandbridge's natural advantages. Choices are needed. High-voltage electric grid infrastructure is not a good fit. We're not opposed to wind farm generation of electricity. We're opposed to it here in Sandbridge. Keep singular focus on these natural advantages. Avoid risks that may endanger the economic success of Sandbridge by diluting this focus. Electric infrastructure brings with it many uncertainties: federal and state regulations, added complexity. They will require local attention, your attention, and dilute focus away from Sandbridge itself. Unintended consequences affecting many people are likely. Lastly, I'm concerned Avangrid is pushing the city to a quick decision. Overall, wind farm viability is facing many concerns. Why the rush? I believe other sites are available and probably better, just not as attractive to Avangrid. For Avangrid, this project supports New England energy needs, has limited flexibility, and no plan to coordinate with city's infrastructure actions. Avangrid's parent company, Aberdola, wants U.S. growth to support its European investment needs. I conclude there are no, oh, and by the way, Avangrid is set up to limit its liabilities. It is a holding company, and Avangrid Renewables is the, is the company you would sue. They don't have many resources. I conclude no common interest between Avangrid and Sandbridge.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Elaine Fecetti. After Ms. Fecetti is Mark Fecetti.
He fell asleep. Hello. I'm Elaine Fecetti, and I thank you for the opportunity for all of us to speak tonight. I just want to make sure everyone is awake, because I want to thank my community that I am very proud to be a part of. There's a tremendous number of people that have put in a tremendous number of hours doing the research and the due diligence on this project, and I cannot thank you enough. And I want to thank Mrs. Henley for bringing this to the forefront and making this happen. The Development Authority brought this to you five years ago, and it's shocking or disturbing to me that any kind of due diligence on your part was not done. I hope that you will listen to what everyone said tonight, find a way to either approve or disprove their concerns by doing independent studies. The first question that should have been asked when this came to you, because you're not our state representatives, you're not our federal representatives, you are our local representatives, you are our voice. And the voice tonight was about the effect of, on the communities. It's not just Sandbridge, it's also Lagamar, Red Mill, Ocean Lakes, Corporate Landing. Some of those folks are not here tonight. But the first question should have been, what is the impact to our local community, our local infrastructure, and our local wildlife and environment? Not one person from Sandbridge tonight debated the need or even brought up the question of renewable energy. This is not a forum for discussing whether renewable energy is where we want to be. It's, is this the best place to put it and the best place to execute it? So I hope you will take into account all the many hours of research that have been brought to your attention, and we do deserve answers to all of these questions. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jay Leach. And then Alan Mancusi Ungaro.
Good evening, members of council, city manager, and staff. My name is Jay Leach. I'm a lifelong resident of Virginia Beach. I love Sandbridge, and I love Virginia Beach so much that I've given over 40 years of my life as a public servant, whether it be through the fire department or through EMS. As a former wind energy skeptic, after extensive education, I cannot stand for many of the negative comments that you've heard and claims tonight. I believe in intellectual honesty, not fallacies or political fear-mongering. I taught political science for over 20 years. Surprisingly enough, about a month ago, I was up in Baltimore at the Central Atlantic Wind Farm Suppliers Conference, and I heard several people talking about a small town on Long Island and the fear-mongering that was brought up at the local level to fight against offshore wind. And I was appalled, but as a political science teacher, I was like, yeah, those kind of things do happen, and I've walked right into it this evening. Per Councilman Taylor's request, I'm an owner of a small maritime business, three of them: First Landing Charters, Patriotic Excursions, and Atlantic Launch. As a charter fishing captain, I have personally seen offshore what the two turbines have done to the environment out there. It's been nothing but positive. I've had customers on my patriotic excursions ask me to take them out to see the turbines. These are visitors here because they have an inherent interest in what's going on out there, and they want to educate themselves like I have been doing for the last two years. And as the owner of Atlantic Launch, I would be supporting the commercial construction, surveying, and maintenance to the wind farms up and around the Central Atlantic area. Years ago, this council was tasked with making a decision on whether or not to keep, to allow the Oceanfront Lifeguard Service to maintain or for the city to come in and take it over. And a former distinguished member of council made the following comment. He said, "It is not government's job to take business away from small businesses." I hope that today's council will remember that. I offer an invitation to each of you all. I would be happy to take you out to see the two existing turbines that are off our coast in the near immediate future. That'll addage a picture worth a thousand words. When you go out there and you see that yourself, and you see the aquatic activity, you see the fishermen out there fishing around those turbines, it has a dramatic effect on you. Wind power is here to stay. Let's work together to keep businesses like mine in business. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
The next speaker is Alan Mancusi Ungaro. And then James Kim Crutchfield.
If, I have a question. If I say I voted for all of you, will you give me extra time? No? Ah, good try. Anyway, I'm a physician, thankfully retired. I trained at one of the biggest residencies in my field in the early 80s. I tried to find a study with you on electromagnetic fields that existed in the parking lot, but I couldn't find one. I was the medical director of the largest electric company in New York State. It literally stretched from Albany to Buffalo, just like the Erie Canal. One of my many responsibilities was, of course, the safety of our employees, particularly the ones that worked on the high-tension lines. They are 220 volts to 230,000 volts they had to work with. We had a concerning issue with a lineman who, turns out, he needed a pacemaker. So we went to the company and went through all sorts of layers. Finally got an engineer, and they would not say it's okay to be near an electrical high tension line if you have a pacemaker. They would not commit to it. There are now many more electronic devices implanted for people's house, including pacemakers even for the brain, diabetic injection pumps, defibrillators, et cetera, et cetera. The current rapid rate of experimentation development of new electronic devices are unpredictably, whether they'll be affected by EMF levels, and that's an extremely important piece of information. Have the manufacturers of these devices been contacted for information on the effects of exposures and to what level of EMF? Saying that it's safe at under 1,000, they're not talking about you with a brain pacemaker. They're talking about an average person, which is a whole different thing. Also, if the parking lot's not paved, are you gonna pave it over? Will that make it less EMF exposure? If not, why hasn't this been, excuse me, why hasn't this been a study? Considering six railroad car-sized transition joint bays will be buried with 275 kilowatt lines at more than 1,000 amps, which is a lot of energy. And close proximity to the surface, what will the EMF levels be in the parking lot? You can't just say, oh, it'll be okay. I'd like to see an independent verification if you do not share, if they do not share this design information, how you're gonna check it out. Anyway, we need more information on the levels of EMF, not just say, oh, it's okay, it'll be like a hair dryer. Come on, that's not fair. And I'm looking forward to seeing these parts in the report that I haven't seen yet. And also, as an aside, I don't know about you, but I've never seen a project of this complexity end on time. So I was wondering, I don't know how this works, but can you have in the contract deal, whatever you call it, a penalty for every day over May 15th? They're still there to motivate them? Because I don't see it happening. And also, 800 new jobs. How do they come up with that number? I don't know about any of you, but all these projects for all eons, they say, oh, it'll make a million jobs, oh, 200 jobs. And what do they all do? Mysteriously, it goes a lot lower. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Thanks him a lot. Bye-bye.
James Kim Crutchfield, and then Cynthia Roy.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you for your patience and allowing us this forum to be able to talk, and I have appreciated all sides of it and the different points that people make, because I think people are of goodwill and they want to do the right thing. We're just trying to figure out what is the right thing for Sandbridge at this time. I retired in 2021 up in New Jersey, moved down here. We moved down here for a couple of reasons. One of them is because it was just a great place to be. We moved to Sandbridge. I'm a homeowner on Sandbridge, in Sandbridge, on San Piper Road. The beach, we have the beach, the pier, the back bay. We have the wildlife refuge, and we have great doughnuts down at the, down at the market. But the bigger reason that we moved here is because we met the people that were in Sandbridge. So these are the kind of people we want to hang out with. This is where I want to retire. This is where I want to be. And most of the people that I have talked to and lived there, and are actually homeowners and use some of their homes for short-term rentals, they are concerned. They do not want this project. There are some who do, many who do not. But I'm not against, you know, wind projects. I'm not against renewable energy and green. I'm for all of that. I think it's a great idea. Do it in Kitty Hawk. If not, why not? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Cynthia Roy, and then Arthur Moy Jr.
Y'all ready for your pajamas? Good evening. My name is Cynthia Roy, and my husband and I are retired residents of Sandbridge Beach, and we own, we've owned this home for 18 years. We chose the community because of its beauty, serenity, and friendly people. It is truly an oasis of peace and relaxation, and is appreciated by all who live, visit, and vacation here. My husband and I, like others, are concerned that there has not been comprehensive research and analysis of impacts of the Kitty Hawk Wind Project, including the environmental, economic, and other negative impacts on Sandbridge Beach, its residents, the ocean, fisheries, wildlife, businesses, tourism, and the coastal way of life. Now, we support the development of clean energy like many people in Sandbridge, resources like wind, but we believe it should be developed safely and responsibly and minimize environmental and other harms. We do not oppose economic development of efforts to combat climate change, just the landing site of cables. It appears to us that Avangrid select the Sandbridge because it is the least costly alternative. It's interesting that Avangrid did not mention the cost of various alternatives, other alternatives. Sandbridge has chosen to probably maximize their profits. Sandbridge has chosen to probably maximize their profits. There are lists of issues that some have already spoken of earlier, but I just want to emphasize a few other. I think that other sites should really be considered. The environmental impact of the project to the ocean and beach, the adverse economic impacts on businesses, property values, rental income, and lost tax revenue, including both real estate and rental tax. What is the benefit to Sandbridge Beach and nearby impacted communities? And Virginia Beach City as a whole? Frankly, I don't understand what the benefits are to our city. So we sincerely hope that the city council will fully consider these issues and carefully consider whether any benefits of the massive project outweigh the costs and harm to our communities. And it's pretty easy for those who do not live in Sandbridge to support this project. They have no idea. And another thing I want to point out, I hope that this project is not a done deal with the city council, because we've listened to many of the city staff, and it sounds like they're sold already. So please, give this careful consideration and consider the impact that it will have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of city council, thank you for this opportunity. I'm before you today as a citizen of Virginia Beach for 47 years. I live in District 1. And just before retiring, I spent my entire working career in the maritime industry right here in Hampton Roads. But I wanted to point out a couple of things that just last week, the City of Virginia Beach sponsored the annual State of the Port address. You were there, Mr. Mayor. And the executive director of the Port Authority mentioned the importance of our offshore wind industry coming to Virginia and bringing growth to the port. And I mentioned that because currently, a little over 20% of the maritime workforce resides in Virginia Beach. They are for growing their port, they are for offshore wind and the energy, and I'm sorry, the business that it'll obviously bring. In 2010, the Virginia General Assembly created the Virginia Offshore Wind Development Authority, and I was honored to be appointed to that authority by then-Governor McDonald and subsequently reappointed by Governor McAuliffe and Governor Northam. But that time with VADA, as well as my maritime career, afforded me the opportunity to learn firsthand what the advantages of this offshore industry can bring to Virginia, to the Commonwealth, to the region, and to the city of Virginia Beach. The economic benefits are real, the job opportunities are real, and more, most importantly, the opportunity to move to a clean, reliable, renewable source of much-needed energy is extremely important to all of us. For that, I thank you very much.
Hey, thank you for coming.
The next speaker is Chris Petracos, and after that will be Karen Forjé.
Good evening.
Council, Mr. Mayor. Bring this down. Thank you all for being present to listen to us and our concerns. Offshore Wind Hub, Center for Clean Energy, Start of a New Industry. These are great sounding buzzwords, but that's really all they are. I heard someone say brand recognition. This is our home, and we're not willing to sacrifice it for those who want to use it as a rung in their career ladder. I'm a resident of Sandbridge, and I came to support my community by speaking out against this project. They say one letter represents the voice of 10 constituents. It means much more to arrive in person, and you've got well over 100 people listed to speak tonight. Respectfully, our goal is to keep you here all night, to show you how much this issue means to us. We each represent many more voices than what you see here, and they're all saying the same thing. We don't want this. Avangrid is not run by altruists, despite what they might want you to believe. They say to consider future children and grandchildren, but what about the children and grandchildren among the hundreds of residents living in Sandbridge now, whose lives will be negatively impacted for years? They speak about benefiting veterans. As a veteran myself, I can tell you that we don't need them. In fact, Sandbridge is where many military residents choose to retire, because of all the reasons that makes Sandbridge special. Avangrid's project will disrupt the quality of life for all the residents there. They're not doing this for us, and it's not even clear that Virginia will benefit. There's not even concrete evidence that the net impact of this type of project is ultimately positive, not fiscally or environmentally. So please listen to what the people here are asking for now, and not what this corporation is telling you we might benefit from in the future. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Karen Forjé. After that, it'll be Ray Jalkeo.
Hey, Karen, how you doing?
Good evening. Thank you for your endurance today. I'm Karen Forjé, and I'm here representing LR Now, and we appreciate the opportunity to provide our thoughts to you on this project. LR Now fully supports wind energy. In Virginia Beach, we deal daily with the effects of climate change on our community and understand that we must move ahead with energy generation that is not fossil fuel-based. We have the opportunity in coastal Virginia to be leaders in offshore wind energy development. As leaders and innovators in this field, we must make sure that we get this right. At the present time, there are significant questions about this project that have not been answered. Until these questions are answered, we think it is premature for the city to provide easements to Avangrid. The landing site is problematic for many in the Sandbridge community, and these concerns need to be addressed. At LR Now, we are primarily concerned about the route that has been chosen for the transmission cables. Only one route has been proposed, and that route goes through sensitive wetland and Cypress Forest habitat that is part of the Back Bay National Wildlife Refuge and home to many rare species of plants and animals. There has been no public input process on the selection of this route or any alternatives offered. The same corridor is being proposed for a major road project, subsea cable transmission lines, and the Avangrid electric cables, tripling the impacts to this sensitive ecosystem. The company has said that all of their transmission lines will be underground, but in similarly sensitive habitat areas, the biologists and federal permitting agencies have determined that above-ground lines are less destructive to the natural habitat and are preferred. In addition, we have not been provided with a hydrologic study to determine what effect these underground duck bank structures will have on water movement in this area, impacting the flood-prone areas to the north and the south of this route. And lastly, because there is no power purchase agreement in place, we do not know who will be purchasing the power generated by the Avangrid Wind Farm. We sincerely hope that through further work and candid conversation, these and other questions about this project can be answered. We want to do this right so that offshore wind can flourish in our area and so that the community will enthusiastically welcome further wind energy development in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Ray Jalkeo. After that, it'll be Arqueta Howard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Ray Jalkeo. I'm a local resident right down the street at Highgate Greens in District 2. I'm also the vice president of sales of a port trucker, Service Transfer, Inc., and the president of the Tidewater Motor Truck Association. My company, Service Transfer, has 25 employees who are residents of Virginia Beach, so we have real interest in this. We are strong supporters of the Kitty Hawk Wind Project. We feel this will lead to improved air quality, create jobs, high-paying technical jobs in the community, increase business through the ports, that it's a big economic engine for the area here, help the entire maritime and local community, and also improve truck volumes. I've seen the impact of the port in this area. I've seen the impact of new companies moving in like Steel and Sensations, and the impact they have on jobs and bringing people into the area and increasing the volumes in the port and the trucking volumes. So I think this, the Avangrid project will have similar effects to the economy here. So in conclusion, I think we need to bring in new businesses like the Avant Grid project to strengthen the economy, create new jobs, improve the air quality with sustainable energy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ray, I'm sorry, Arqueta Howard, and then George Hagerman. After that, it'll be Daniel Heatwell. Is George Hagerman here?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
At the mic, please.
Yeah, thank you so much. It's a real privilege to be here. I've never been in this chamber myself. I'm a permanent resident of Virginia Beach since 2010. I moved down here from Northern Virginia when my, my father, who was a Naval Academy class of 41, was in his final years of life. And at the time, I was working at Virginia Tech and was the principal author of a report that was funded by the General Assembly on the feasibility of offshore wind. It was included University of Virginia, Virginia Tech, ODU, VIMS. And so we tried to do, and one of the things I've enjoyed is being a state university employee, is that we really want to be a good third party, that people trust, that we trust what was in our report, which was published in 2010. And I like to think it helped catalyze Dominion Energy's interest and what they've done with the pilot project offshore. I now work for the National Renewable Energy Lab, based in Boulder, Colorado, and I work remotely. I live up at 60th Street and Oceanfront Avenue. I'm blessed to have, it's a cottage my parents bought in 1974. And, you know, as I've been listening here, it occurs to me that there are, I think we can create a win-win. I would like to, I would say, my motivation is one that I was inspired to study oceanography and love the sea by Katrine DeWitt of the DeWitt Cottage fame. She was my fourth-grade teacher and gave me a great interest and love of the sea. And it's heartbreaking to see what's happening to the ocean, ocean acidification. I don't see the shells that I used to see as a kid, the windrows of sand dollars and all kinds of marine life. So I want to be part of that solution, and that's motivated me for a career in renewable energy for 40 years. And I want to make sure before I hit my three-minute mark that I want to be able to offer my, my scientific experience. I also served on the Boham Intergovernmental Committee that started, had its first meeting in December of 2009. So we, we learned how to forge consensus to locate the Virginia offshore wind energy area that Seaval or the Dominion project is now at. You know, I think, I think I've heard a lot of calls here for people, I think we need to think strategically. Everything I'm hearing is that the cable landfall is problematic, and I went on the site to see if I could find the study that would have compared the different routes, and it was completely redacted. So I can see why people are concerned. You know, so all I want to say is I think there's a solution here, because I know in 10, 20, 30 years, the biggest threat to Sandbridge will be sea level rise. All the beach nourishment in the world, it is accelerating. And I don't know who's done the study to see that. So that doesn't mean that we have to sacrifice the, that community for sea level rise to be slowed by adopting clean energy. But I just think we should try to work together to find a solution.
I'm sorry, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, all right.
Next speaker is Daniel Heatwell, and then April Christensen.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you all for your service to the city. My name is Daniel Heatwell. I'm a resident and business owner in the city, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce as the Virginia Beach Division Chair. The Hampton Roads Chamber supports the Avangrid project and would ask city council to proceed with the next steps in the process to call for a public hearing and vote. The Avangrid project on the heels of the Dominion Energy project gives Virginia Beach the chance to be the East Coast hub for wind energy in our country. Investments of this type do not come along every day. With over $2 billion in economic impact over the next decade and close to $100 million in tax revenues, this could be a game-changing project for our city and deserves due consideration. When someone wants to make this level of investment in your city, you don't just dismiss it out of hand, and you certainly don't say, let's send it to North Carolina. This is Virginia Beach's 60th anniversary as a city, and we are not just a sleepy little beach town and farmland that we were in 1963. We are the largest city in the Commonwealth, and we are looked to as a leader in the region. I ask you to remember that you represent all 450,000 residents of the city, the businesses located here, and the Hampton Roads region. Without reliable energy, our residents and businesses often face uncertainty, whether it's the loss of power like we dealt with this past weekend during the terrible storms, or a business looking to scale up or locate in Virginia Beach, wondering how they're going to meet their energy needs. In addition, our military installations are counting on us to assist them to meet their energy needs so they can continue their mission to protect and serve our country. In summary, this could be a game-changing project that gives our city the opportunity to stake our claim as a East Coast hub for wind energy, to realize substantial economic investment, and to shore up our electrical grid. I thank you for your consideration, and on behalf of the Virginia Beach Division of the Hampton Roads Chamber, I ask you to proceed with the next steps in the process, call for a public hearing, and vote in support of the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is April Christensen. And after Ms. Christensen, it'll be Joseph Kinley.
Good evening. I'm here, I have been a resident in Sandbridge for only five years, but five generations of my family have vacationed here through the decades. And my dream was to buy here one day, and I love it here. What I would like to do is ask whether this board would consider, having heard the different positions here tonight, receiving questions that could be answered at a later time, because there's been a lot of information disseminated tonight. I completely, I will say, I am opposed to the Avangrid project. I think that tonight's presentation by them has raised more questions than provided answers. And so I'd really just like the opportunity to submit some questions to, to you, maybe to filter back to Avangrid for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joseph Kinley, and after that, it'll be David Driscoll.
Hey, how you doing today?
Doing great. Good evening. Hope you guys are doing well. It's an honor to speak in front of you again, Ms. Kinley. I know my mother sent you an email regarding this. She's in direct opposition to this project, as well as I. The wonderful thing here tonight is the word "no" is a very powerful word in both English and Spanish. Very powerful. Avangrid is a Spanish-owned company by 85 point such-and-such percent. The rest is owned by hedge funds. That's who's pushing this. Okay? I don't want this in my backyard. I live in Sandbridge. I came home from the hospital in 1971 to Sandbridge. I don't want it in my backyard. I know you don't. I know you don't. I think you all, would you raise your hand if you would want this in your backyard? Can you raise your hand if you would want this in your backyard? If you can't, that's fine. But Sandbridge's backyard is Sandbridge. It's not Shore Drive. We pay taxes in Sandbridge. I'm asking you to say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is David Driscoll, and then Deborah Jeter. Deborah Jeter, and then Ann Kazoid.
Good evening. I know you are tired.
Yeah.
My name is Debbie Jeter, and I've never even been to a city council. My name is Debbie Jeter, and I've never even been to a city council meeting, much less spoken to one. So that's how important this is to me. We own property in Sandbridge since 2017. We rented it out for five and a half years, and then in October, we retired and moved into our dream retirement beach home community. That was our whole goal in life, was to retire to the beach. We're really concerned about this proposal to bring this project cables ashore. It's a small, quiet community. It's family-oriented. People feel safe here, and the idea of putting this and interrupting all of the rentals that people have, if we can't, we own ours now, but the people that rent their condos and houses during the summer, that's where they earn their money to pay their mortgages. If they can't rent these out, because if I was going to come to Sandbridge and I saw what was going on, I wouldn't come here. I'd go somewhere else. I'd go to a different beach. That's all I want to say. I think property owners deserve some respect, and I do oppose this very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ann Kazoid, and then Lawrence Kazoid.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience with all of us tonight. My name is Ann Kazoid, and I am a Sandbridge resident as well. I oppose Avengrid Wind Project for many reasons, and I want to make sure everyone is clear that we're not all fear mongers here tonight that live in Sandbridge. I do support clean energy, but Avengrid has not been transparent about the environmental and economic impacts to Virginia Beach and to Sandbridge. I believe they have done, they have not done their due diligence, but we absolutely must do ours. More research is needed. I urge each of you to listen to our concerns and meet with us. Some of you have already done that, but not all of you. Please open your doors to us, and please do an independent study. Studies show the project poses risks to the Sandbridge, Sandbridge Beach shoreline stability and the Sandbridge Beach replenishment project that we, as property owners of Sandbridge, pay for with our taxes. Why Virginia? Why Sandbridge? From what I've seen from the public data record, Kitty Hawk Project makes way more sense to be brought in into North Carolina at lower cost than it would to Virginia. I strongly urge you to protect our beautiful Sandbridge beaches, the important tax revenue, from our tourism and our property values, and of course, our health. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Lawrence Kazoid, and then David Nevilleston.
Good evening. My name is Lawrence Kazoid, and I'm a full-time resident in the Sandbridge community at 3064 San Piper Road in Virginia Beach. I'm a retired professional engineer with extensive experience in nuclear engineering and environmental regulatory affairs. Based on my review of documentation associated with the Kitty Hawk Wind Project off the coast of North Carolina, I have the following concerns. The associated construction and operations plan is technically inadequate, fails to address protection of the general public from non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation, and fails to include important economic, environmental, and infrastructure security lessons learned from previous energy infrastructure projects already underway or completed elsewhere. Avengrid and its regulator, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, are not demonstrating due diligence in their public engagement, engineering, or economic analysis of this project. Together, they presume a preferred option of power transmission cable landfall in the Sandbridge community of Virginia Beach, which in my opinion is inadequately engineered and presented without proper stakeholder engagement as required by federal law. As a result, I'm requesting that city council disengage the city of Virginia Beach from any cable transmission consideration associated with this project, and to recommend that you encourage the state of Virginia to follow suit so that North Carolina remains the only state engaged and involved with cable landfall for any offshore wind projects off the coast of North Carolina. In other words, Virginia's already taken its turn. It's time for North Carolina to take its turn. Thank you.
The next speaker is David Nevilleston. Mr. Nevilleston, Mark Johnson, I think I saw him leave, Colin Arnold. And after Mr. Arnold, we'll move to the WebEx speakers.
Hello, council, Mr. Mayor. I should disclose, I am an employee of an environmental nonprofit named the League of Conservation Voters. I am not here representing them tonight. I am simply here as a resident of Virginia Beach. And I want to talk to you about how, why we should be a good neighbor with this project. We've heard a lot from Sandbridge, and they don't have all the information that they need. We need, they, they are right to say that they want an independent study, but we also need to consider the fact that Hampton Roads is, I believe, the 22nd largest, most populous metro area in the country, and this decision is going to affect more than just Virginia Beach. It's going to affect the entirety of the region. We need offshore wind to supply energy over the next 20 to 50 years in order to meet sustainability demands for this area. And if we don't supply it with offshore wind, we're asking Southern Virginia Beach, we're asking Chesapeake, we're asking Suffolk to take on those infrastructure demands in ways that aren't going to be as, as efficient or as cheap as offshore wind is. We need to consider what the best strategic option for having offshore wind come into Virginia Beach is, because we're the only city that can offer that to the rest of Hampton Roads. But we have to be good neighbors with the people of Sandbridge because they're the ones that are going to have to bear the brunt of the construction and any possible, you know, problematic natures of, of this, of this project. So I implore you, we should fully adopt offshore wind. We should strongly consider it, but Sandbridge has asked for more information. They've asked for public hearings. We should give them that because that's the best thing we can do to ensure that, as an entire community, we're entirely on board with the infrastructure projects that we're allowing in the city. Thank you.
Mayor, there are, there were five speakers, or, no, five, five speakers that signed up via WebEx. However, I understand there's, Kevin, is there any on? There's two, and neither one of those had signed up, registered with my office for WebEx. I'm going to go ahead and call their names just in case they are in attendance. Summer Lane, Tom Hazard, Jake Cucci, 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 sorry, Colin Sloan.
Tracy Thornton.
None of those. That's all the speakers, sir. So now that we want to call the, the presenter back. The rebuttal response.
Thank you for the opportunity to respond to what you've heard this evening and to answer questions. We'll be efficient because the hour is late, but I want to highlight a few things, and then we're going to address some of the questions you've heard. As you heard, Avengrid Renewable is the third-largest renewable energy company in the United States. The project will help meet both the federal goal of 30 gigawatt of offshore wind by 2030 and the Virginia Clean Economy Act's goal of 5.2 gigawatts by developing this project located 36 miles off the shore of Sandbridge. Avengrid was awarded the offshore wind lease area designated Kitty Hawk by the federal government in 2017. Let's be clear, the project has always been designed to deliver its power to the Virginia Grid. This is a Virginia project that will bring significant benefits for Virginia, Hampton Roads, and the Commonwealth. Virginia's grid is able to accept, accept the power from these turbines. Avengrid is requesting approval of a deed of easement for up to six power cables to make landfall in the municipal parking lot in Sandbridge for the Kitty Hawk Wind Project. Avengrid has identified Sandbridge as the preferred option to interconnect the project because its proximity to the transmission infrastructure, there's sufficient space, and there's minimal environmental impact. The Kitty Hawk Wind Project will bring power ashore through horizontal directional drilling at a depth of up to 85 feet below the beach and dunes. There will be no physical impact to the beach and no restriction to access to the beach. In 2020, Virginia Beach Development Authority and the City of Virginia Beach entered into two separate option agreements to provide property to host substation facilities to facilitate interconnection to the Virginia Grid. Avengrid continues to make option payments under these agreements. In 2020, the City of Virginia Beach City Council unanimously granted a franchise agreement to Avengrid to utilize the city right-of-way to transmit the power from the onshore landing to the proposed substations, with the veteran members of this council voting for it. As you heard, the Kitty Hawk cables will be housed under the parking lot in transition joint bays, which will be at depths of nine feet. There will be no above-ground infrastructure. You will also not see the turbines from Sandbridge offshore. They're 36 miles away. Once construction is completed, the parking lot will be resurfaced, and the lot will have six manhole covers for access to the transition bays. Our goal is for construction to occur during a single off-season, October 1 through May 15. Once onshore, the power cables are proposed to be placed underground within the city right-of-ways from the landfall at the municipal parking lot to the proposed onshore substation at Corporate Landing to make the interconnection to the Virginia Grid. In sum, Avengrid has worked transparently and diligently on this project for over five years, and has met with the city and the community stakeholders numerous times. Ultimately, the request for the easement is a necessary step to move the project, project forward. To have already supported the project with a grant of substation properties and right-of-way approvals, we trust you will continue to support the project by granting a utility easement to land the cables. It is a fair and reasonable action to take, and to be absolutely clear, the installation of transmission cables will do no harm to the local residents or the city. This is a utility construction project, similar to what happens across the city every day. Temporary traffic interruptions are required to make progress. You've asked, you may ask the questions like the residents have, what, what is in it for us? And I'm just speeding this up, and I'm going to hit a highlight of a couple of these, and then I'm going to bring my EMF expert up here to address some EMF questions. Firstly, on the benefits, Virginia currently imports 30% of its power. This renewable power will help Virginia fill the gap and support industry and provide citizens, our kids and grandkids, yes, my kids and grandkids, with energy for years to come. Moreover, and very importantly, major business entities will not locate to a state without available renewable energy. This is a matter of economic development. Second, the project is good for the environment. Contrary to negative and misguided social media posts, wind is clean, reliable, and a plentiful source of energy. As technology advances, offshore wind will become even more important to supplying our energy needs. Third, this industry, new to the U.S. but operational overseas since 1991, will diversify the Hampton Roads economy and will be the fourth leg to our stool. It is estimated that offshore wind could be at least a $70 billion industry. This will provide direct economic benefits in the form of taxes that will fund budgets for schools, sand replenishment, and the like. It will be a boon to our maritime industry and will support many good new jobs. The Kitty Hawk Wind Project will serve as one project in support of offshore wind hub, putting local communities and people to work. Multiple offshore wind projects located within the Mid-Atlantic region increase the opportunity for bringing new business and investments. Fifth, the Hampton Roads metro area has the largest percentage of maritime workforce in the United States. There is no other area on the East Coast that is more capable of servicing the offshore wind supply chain. Offshore wind and the manufacturing and shipping industry it supports is in perfect alignment with the region's military-related service industries and labor force. Offshore wind will provide good jobs for military veterans close to home. The renewable energy industry employs 67% more veterans than the national average. Avengrid's workforce has more than 20% veterans who bring valuable knowledge, skills, and experience from the years of service. And last, the residents of Sandbridge will also derive tangible community benefits, which will include, among other things, utility upgrades that may improve water supply and address sewer facility, among others. So we're now happy to answer some questions. I'm going to ask Andrew Lince to come forward on the EMF. If I can do that, Mayor.
Sure.
Okay. So you heard earlier that the EMF at ground level, after the cables are buried or installed, are equal to 100 milligaws. 100 milligaws is the exposure you get under a light bulb. These cables are planned to be underground. The parking lot will be paved. If you want to learn more about EMF, which we've been very transparent about, our modeling report is publicly available on our website. So I asked Andrew if he'll come forward. Andrew is our EMF engineer. Why don't you introduce yourself real quick and let them know what you think about the EMF on the project?
Thank you for the introduction, and, and good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Lince. I'm representing a engineering firm that's been working in hand with Avengrid and the Kitty Hawk team in regards to the study and the modeling of potential electric and magnetic fields as, as a result of the Kitty Hawk Project. And I just want to bring up a couple of real quick points here. EMF typically is, in the industry, is discussed as both electric and magnetic fields. Electric fields are not a concern because, as we were talking about earlier, all of the cables are buried. So that the grounding of the earth is base, is, is preventing any electric field from being developed from the underground cables. Stepping to the scientific consensus in regards to health effects, several thousand studies have been conducted around the world on the potential health effects from power line, electric, and magnetic fields. And from all of those studies, no conclusive evidence from these studies have shown a health threat from public exposure to power line, electric, and magnetic fields. This is from studies given out by the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences and the National Institutes of Health. In regards to comments that were received earlier regarding pacemakers, there's, a similar statement comes from that American Conference of Governmental Industrial Health, industrial hygienes, excuse me, stating that the exposure of workers with cardiac pacemakers should not exceed 1,000 milligaws. What we've been showing in our modeling is that project, EMF or magnetic fields is developed from this, will be less than those, that threshold, even at a worst-case conservative scenario that was modeled with this project, and that modern cardiac pacemakers are designed to operate in environments such as these. As was mentioned before, the modeling results are publicly available on Kitty Hawk's website. And then I'd like to bring up just one additional point in regards to coastal Virginia, since that's been brought up a number of times. There are some significant differences in regards to how they're transmitting power through their underground systems versus what Kitty Hawk is modeling. The primary difference being the number of cables and conductors that are being planned between the two, hence why there's such a dramatic difference between the two, the two magnetic field results. What we're showing here is through six circuits, 18 conduits, they have 27 conduits. So that's the primary difference between magnetic fields.
Thank you, Andrew. And in the interest of time, we'll keep moving pretty quickly here, Mayor. So the second issue we heard was the impact on sand nourishment in the beach. Calling up Chris Morris, who's the Director of Engineering, to comment on that. And then we'll have one other thing we'll address, because around time, people are tired, and we'd be glad to follow up afterwards as well. So Chris, why don't you talk about beach nourishment and any impacts?
Thank you, Steve. My name is Chris Morris. I'm the Director of Engineering for Avengrid Renewables offshore business. There's approximately 41 engineers that work underneath me across multiple disciplines. I myself am a civil and environmental engineer, and prior to my work experience within the renewable energy industry, I was actually a dredging consultant. I've designed beach nourishment projects and dredging work throughout New England. So I want to really directly address some of the comments around the beach nourishment. As a part of the permitting process and industry best practices, we've conducted a cable burial risk assessment and feasibility assessment. The study looks at the risk, looks at the ability to install and the risks to the cable after it has been installed. And, and when we do this, we consult directly with the Bureau of Ocean Energy's Marine Mineral Service, as well as the Army Corps of Engineer and other federal agencies. When we did this, they ultimately identified the sand burrow areas to us as a resource that they wanted to protect. They provided us with a buffer zone associated with those resources, and we've adhered to those buffers as we've designed our cables. As, in our initial studies, we had the, the cables to the north during further During further analysis and further design progress, we've actually moved those cables further to the south and have established a much larger buffer between where the Army Corps of Engineers would go and borrow that material for beach nourishment. Additionally, during these studies, we've placed the cable at a depth where the Army Corps can lay any cable over the top of it without any problems associated with that cable and would not create any issues with actually spraying the sand onto the beach.
Will the project have any impact on the beach at all?
No.
And just concluding, there was a comment made about impact on tourism and property values. We've done research as to whether offshore wind projects have negatively affected tourism. Social scientists from the University of Rhode Island completed a research study about tourism in the Block Island Wind Farm. Keep in mind, there's not a lot out there that's been built, which is an offshore wind farm three miles off the coast of Rhode Island. The findings of the study found that the wind farm enhanced the tourism experience and increased recreational fishing, and that's what we found. And then lastly, the comment on public engagement, we're happy to engage with comments and input. We're not trying to avoid questions. We're happy to continue that public engagement. The point is, the public engagement will continue to occur. It's required by the NEPA process, but we're just not there yet with respect to that federal engagement process. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time, council. We appreciate your attention.
Okay, Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Roman. Roman, I've got three questions. First, can you answer again the easy-to-me answer, and that's why not the state of North Carolina versus here in Virginia? And then second, with that, why not south of Sandbridge? And I understand why not north?
So in our, one of our construction and operations plans, we are giving flexibility in terms of a landing location for both Virginia. We included both Virginia and North Carolina as potential landing sites, but the fact of the matter is, there isn't enough capacity at the points of interconnection, which makes sense for an offshore project. So the onshore route would be such that it would be very disruptive in excess of hundreds of miles to get to the exact point of interconnection. We've also looked at routes through Pamlico Sound, and we've received a great deal of feedback from the Fish and Wildlife Service, for example, as well as crab fishermen. There's a lot of fishing activity there. There's also sediment that's very soft that wouldn't support cable burial. So all things considered, and as well as a barrier beach and HDDing under a barrier beach, while not impossible to do, is certainly not preferred, given the fragile ecosystem there. So we have done due diligence assessments for up to 30 landings in North Carolina, and from our due diligence assessment in Virginia, we've come to the conclusion that Sandbridge is the optimal location. And what was your second question?
So, thank you. The second question is maybe for Mr. Roman. The legal entity that would be performing this construction job and the landing, et cetera, is it a LLC? Is it, what's the strength of the entity, the legal entity?
So Avengrid formed Kitty Hawk Wind LLC, and we, that is the owner of the lease area. So Avengrid is the parent company who would be developing, owning, and operating the project.
So, yes, can you speak to that capability of the strength and the assets of the entity that can, in a court of law, defend a lawsuit or other capabilities?
Sure. I'm going to defer to my colleague Eric, who's been with the company for 17 years and can certainly answer this question much better than I. Here he comes. He's always outside.
Okay.
It's cooler.
I know. I'm just.
So the project will ultimately have guarantees with its counterparties that will require it to continue to operate. We have to also provide a decommissioning plan with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management that's bonded. So those are the guarantees that you get around project performance?
What does that mean?
Folks, nothing from the gallery, please.
That answer the question, Worth?
For tonight, it does, but I will have some more.
Yeah, we didn't get to get into decommissioning much, but we're required to decommission at the end of life of the project if we, if it goes away. We've got to take everything out, and there's bonding for that as well.
Okay.
Oh, Josh. Yes, Mr. Scholman.
Sorry, I forgot to turn the mic up. Mr. Roman and everybody who spoke tonight, thank you very much. I have two questions. One of them, I was just kind of curious how you were, what the plan was for navigating the Cypress Swamp, and was there, was there a plan to go underground and horizontally drill under the creek bed? What are the environmental impacts?
Sure. Yes, a great point, and that has been raised by a few of these speakers here this evening. So we have been in close communication and coordination with the Back Bay Refuge, and unlike the 7B project, we would be doing horizontal directional drilling, so going far below the Cypress swamps that have been identified.
Thank you very much. My next question is, because there's a scientist here, I figured I'd avail myself. And just, I'm trying to gauge this EMF issue, the public health and safety issue. And, you know, I know we all carry these around with us every day, and we hold them up to our heads, and we have them in our pockets, and we have them next to us when we sleep. And I am just kind of trying to gauge the relative, you know, do these put off EMFs? Do, are they, is it more or less? Or, you know, the power lines that might be, you know, running in front of our house above ground as opposed to these ones that are proposed to be below ground? I'm just, again, trying to gauge the relative intensity of the EMFs associated with these experiences.
Understood. In short answer, yes. Anything that is basically transmitting power with an amperage to it will create both electric and magnetic fields. So your phone does. I don't have a number in front of me as to what that value would be. Certainly overhead transmission lines, underground transmission lines do create EMF. It's all in the details in regards to how much power they're conducting, where they are placed, and the biggest factor of it is, well, two factors. Electrical, if it's buried or not buried, because if, like I was saying before, when the underground, in the case of the underground cables, since they're buried, there are no electric fields generated. Overhead lines would have an electric field component to it. The other component to be mindful of is distance, is how far are you away from a potential source?
Thank you. Barbara?
Thank you. We've heard a lot from Avengrid tonight, but in all this time, this is the first time we've heard it. Yes, you have a public relations person who has attended meetings, but this is the first time you folks have been here to answer questions. And if we had not insisted on it, I don't think we would have had this session. It's very disappointing to me that we would get to this point and not have the answers I could say a lot, but anyway, I think we all deserve answers to all of the questions before we make a decision, and I know we were sort of expected to make a decision a couple of weeks ago. This is, this is important. Yes, I'm for offshore wind. I'm for clean energy. I'm for Hampton Roads being the hub. It can be because of the port. It doesn't depend on where this particular project lands. There are just too many unanswered questions, and I'm just really disappointed that we had to insist on this before we started to get any answers. There was a little public meeting a year or so ago at the Rec Center, which was very disappointing because I didn't seem to find any, every time I asked someone something, I got a different answer than the previous person had given me. And in all this time, even when I have asked my own economic development directors and people, what's going on, I was told, it's not going to be viable. Don't worry about it. But now suddenly, it's the top thing in town. I'm confused. I haven't had the right answers as the district representative for four years, five years, whatever. I think we are sort of required to provide to everybody the same right-of-way access. It's not really something that we have discretion about, so I certainly wouldn't consider that as having given our approval. I think we've got to have a lot more answers to these questions. I am very much concerned about what happens, not only from the point of landing, but to the point of getting to the grid. I don't think those communities have really had the participation that they deserve. I know when we were at the, whatever the public hearing, public house was, open house a year or so ago, I said, you've got to talk to those neighbors along Culver and along General Booth. They don't even know that this is coming in front of their houses, and I don't see them here tonight. That worries me. Anything that's going to have this much impact on people and on the environment, as one of our speakers said, it's got to be done right. And I appreciate the fact that you all are here tonight. I appreciate your expertise. I appreciate the value of your company, but I think you have short-changed these people in not being as transparent as you needed to be. And if you want to go forward, I'm certainly not going to be in any position to support anything until I feel like there's been the transparency. And I guess the thing that really blew me away was a couple of months ago when I was hearing things that, well, maybe if we give the community something, they'll come around and support. I don't think anybody's ready to take any kind of payoff. We just want the answers. And I think due diligence is something we do need, and if it, I don't know how we get an independent investigation that would be satisfactory, and then who's going to pay for it? I'm not sure the City of Virginia Beach wants to pay for that. But I think if we had had a little bit more of this kind of thing all through the process, I might have been more willing to, to accept some of these things, but it's been so hard to get to this point. I just got a lot of concern, and I think we need time to digest what we've heard tonight, to go back. I've marked some people I want to hear more from, and I still, you know, I got so many answers when I was asking questions of our staff during all this time that conflict with what I'm hearing now. I'm just having a hard time getting to the answer you want, and I've got to have more information.
Okay. You know, if I could say at this point, you know, let me just put it this way, I think it's pretty obvious that these type of decisions are the toughest ones an elected body have to make. You have a situation where you have, you know, two conflicting, you know, sides that, you know, bring up points, but once again, you know, the answer's got to be somewhere in the middle. And I think when you talk about a complicated issue that involves land use and impacts on residents and everything, there has to be a demonstrated, a demonstration that, you know, it's going to be, you're going to be a good neighbor. It's not the construction and stuff. It's going to be what goes on later. And I really think, and I am encouraged though, because as members of this council want our public engagement, and that's what we had tonight, and we invested three and a half-plus hours here. But the thing is, I think with the dialogue that went back and forth, it really establishes what needs to be done going forward to get these things rectified. So, you know, I consulted with the city manager and the city attorney, and perhaps the next best step is a actual, a formal public hearing on this. You know, this was a good demonstration where you introduced the project, but the other thing, you heard the concerns from a number of the residents that have to be addressed that I'm sure that we have to do at least going forward. But I really think that, you know, we have, you know, kind of a thing there, a public hearing, but not have the vote that night to let it digest. But this is an opportunity, you know, for the two sides to get together and have that. Now, with what we went through tonight, we know where the problems are. We know where the concerns are. So, you know, let's get, you know, kind of go back and, you know, it's a complicated project. And, you know, once again, we also have Dominion out there and everything. It's, you know, there's a lot of convolutions in the discussion. But, you know, let's take, you know, through this adversity, let's take the opportunity, you know, to get together, engage, and, you know, answer each other's questions and concern. And then when we come back at a, you know, formal public hearing on it, we may be able to come, you know, to, you know, the right conclusion.
Thank you for that. I think.
Rosemary?
I'll be really brief because I know it's late. I'm just wondering if the people here or the people that have left, if they know how to get in touch with all of you to, because I know the lady says, I have questions, I have questions. And they deserve to have their questions answered. I mean, this is where they live, live, work, and play, and it'll, it's going to have a big impact, so they need to get the answers to those questions. So is that readily available of how to have access to you guys?
Yeah, we have the website, and we have other information, and we have a local community engagement director. So we're happy to leave information with the city or however else you want to do it to get in touch with us. And to the mayor's point, to your point, Rosemary, we're happy to continue to answer questions. There's no question too hard. There's no question that we want to dodge or avoid, so we're more than willing to engage in that. We have attempted to really do some outreach. We sent out 7,000 cards twice, 14,000 mailers to everybody on the corridor. We've had one meeting, to Ms. Hanley mentioned, and so, you know, we're open to answer questions and to make sure people understand their concerns and what our response is, and if there's some way that we can provide that contact information. I don't know if you have it tonight. Go to the website or what would you suggest?
I'm happy I've already been in contact with a few council members in terms of answering questions, and I'm happy to give you my card so that we can answer any questions that are unclear or if you want more information, more than happy to do that.
I'm concerned, I think we can figure out how to get in touch with y'all, but these folks need to know how to get in touch with y'all. So how, how do they reach you?
Sure. Our contact information is on the website.
It's on the website?
Yes.
So what, they did call you?
The email.
Email you?
Yes.
What's the website?
It's kittyhawkoffshore.com.
Okay. And I guess if they request, you call them, you'll give them a call.
Sure. Yes, happy to do that. And we have, just to clarify, we have been engaging with various groups by request as well as one-on-one meetings. So we, this process has been ongoing. We haven't not tried to attempt to do that. So it's, in addition to the open house that was discussed, we've been having various group meetings and one-on-one project status update meetings.
So I mean, I think it's good that you came out early and set up, and so people could come up to you and ask questions and engage and that sort of thing, and I think that needs to continue, but.
Sure.
I guess it's a process.
It is a process, and we thank you again for taking this extraordinary amount of time this evening to engage with us in this process.
Well, you know, let's just end this, you know, with the mutual goal of getting to mutual agreement, okay?
Agreed.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.